So, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the November 10th meeting of the Town Council to order. If we could kindly take a moment of silence to acknowledge all of those that do and have served, enabling each and every one of us our safety and freedom. Thank you all. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would like to ask, is there anyone in our audience recording? And if so, could you please identify yourself? Hearing and seeing none. This meeting is being virtually held through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of our open meeting law. As of 4 o'clock today, no one was signed up for public comments, but maybe Jeannie can let me know if something's changed?
No one has signed up officially. That's right.
Thank you. Council comments. I'm sure we'll have some comments later on during the agenda here. So, at this point, we're clear. And Mary, if you're ready, we could do the...
Yeah, I'm ready. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Tonight, I wanted to follow up on some of the events that have happened since our last meeting. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at my report. I did prepare one again, but not by Thursday. There was just a lot going on the last few days. We have a bunch of good news, the first item of which is that our Open Space Program was accepted by the Commonwealth. And as I say in my report, I want to especially thank Bethany, Donna Prather, and Diane Bishop for the work that they did to get us over the hump, so to speak. There were seven or eight issues that the Commonwealth was questioning, and they put together the package that was sufficient for that review. And the acceptance of our Open Space Plan enables us to apply for some grants, which is always good news for municipal finance. We also received recently notice from the Commonwealth about some community compact connector grants available to small business. So Bethany posted that on the planning page in the website, and we tried to make it available to all of our small businesses in town as soon as we received the information. So, there was no role for the town to play in that. It was simply dissemination of the information, and then it was up to the respective business entities to apply. So hopefully, some people were able to take advantage of that. And we've also hired a new person in the planning office, a woman by the name of Rebecca Jones. She has experience as a municipal paralegal in the city of Westfield. So she started last week, and I think she'll be a great asset to Bethany and to the business of the Planning and Conservation and Zoning Board of Appeals. So we're quite happy about that. We also received our bond rating as a result of the conference call that Steve Lonergan and Don Fonte, Peter Benjamin, and myself participated in. Our rating is AA+ and we've proceeded to bond for our fiscal '20 capital projects. All of the documentation was signed on November 2nd, and we expect the receipt of the funds tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So those bonds are payable over the next 30 years, and we were very happy that our rate stayed the same. Steve can elaborate on that a little bit more, but I think the thinking was with COVID, the general sense in the industry was the likelihood is that the community's ratings would decrease, and East Long Meadows stayed solid. So we're very pleased again about that. The other, the refunding of the bonds that Steve mentioned that last meeting that you approved has resulted in a savings of over $200,000, and the premiums on these new bonds can go to redo, further reduced our interest, our debt service on these bonds. So, we're making progress on the financial front. I know you've heard me sort of, I don't want to say complain, but complain over the last six months about the difficulties of getting work out of that office due to this short staffing and so forth, but we're really starting to, starting to get our necks above water, and it's a good feeling. As I reported last time, we're continuing to work on a number of our other long-term projects, namely the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. We hope to have an update at our next meeting on the status of all of the outstanding capital projects going back to that 2003 appropriation that was a subject of some discussion many months ago. We're also working on compiling our fixed assets, a master plan. Bethany's working on that. I'm working with Elaine on an Employee Guidelines Handbook. And Steve and his cohorts are working on memorializing, creating and memorializing some financial policies for use across town departments. We're also in the process of reviewing our liability and health insurance coverages to determine if there's a possibility of any savings. As you know from our budget conversation last summer, those items are the significant, I'll call them budget busters, over which we have very little control while we're participating in these programs. And the news on that front doesn't really get better because with changes in the ACA and some of the reporting requirements, Corrine Trangisi advised me the other day that next year that tab could be even worse than it was this year. But for now, we're doing, we're reviewing options other than Scantic Valley. We're reviewing all of our liability coverage, as I said, and also constantly on the lookout for opportunities to fund other long-term projects through other sources. I mentioned in my report, Bruce Fenney filed a MassWorks application that is still pending. Those awards will probably be made towards the latter part of November. We've also filed a petition, a grant application through FEMA, which would fund some building infrastructure, namely the generator for Town Hall, which has been on the capital list, project list for some time. And we've, I've also filed an application with CPC to see if they'll consider using CPC funds for the renovation of the track at the high school. The only thing I would say on the generator at Town Hall is that, you know, with, with the storms we've had just this past summer and the electrical outages, the notion that we can work from home is great, except when we, when we are connected by virtual network to the generator in Town Hall, that you can't connect to anything. So, it's, it's not feasible, or it's not a, it's not a solution to say, well, we don't need the generator in Town Hall because we, we have found over this past summer, just in the two August storms, that we really do need it. So hopefully, we'll get that grant and be able to, to buy, buy that. On the issue of boards and commissions, just want to point out anecdotally that I received an application for conservation one day, which I was very happy to receive. I vetted the woman and appointed her. And that same day, at 4:00 in the afternoon, I received a resignation from somebody on the, on the Conservation Committee. So it was sort of like, wasn't even two steps forward, one step back. It was one step forward and one step back. However, I only mention it because I know it's a, it's an issue that is important to us to get full compliment on all of these boards, but it is, it is a very difficult task. However, we did have some good news on that front too, because as a result of the posting and the reminder, there have been a few emails and telephone calls to my office from new, new names, at least new to me, expressing interest in various committees and boards. So we're in the process of reviewing those applications and be happy to share them with you once, once we know what we want to do with them. Work continues on the reporting process for FEMA with our CARES Act money. Paul Morissette and Steve have been working very hard on that, and they've done a great job. They, they turned around the second CARES reimbursement in, I think it was three business days, which is kind of a miracle coming out of Boston. But we submitted back in the spring, we received $174,000, and we got it in seven days, which we thought was great. The second submission was in the $80,000 range, and that money came in, as I said, in three days. We had a department heads meeting. We've had, they've been few and far between this summer for, I guess, obvious reasons, COVID being chief among them, but we did have a meeting on October 21st. And just generally, we discussed, I discussed my expectations for performance evaluations for the department heads, and have encouraged them to use their evaluation, I want to make it a self-evaluation for starters, to give each department head the opportunity to analyze and think through how they can improve their operations and what my office can do to assist in that. So, we had some general discussion about that, and I think it was pretty well-received. Department heads in general, as I've said many times at these meetings, their, their cooperation level is really terrific, and I appreciate each and every one of them for the effort that they've made throughout this very, very difficult year. Generally, the, the departments reported on their ongoing projects. Our Building Department, Kevin Duquette's running around like a chicken with his head cut off. I saw him in the parking lot today, and he had just returned. He said we had 27 new housing starts in town this, this season, this year. So he's, he's out straight and making those inspections, and it all contributes, obviously, to the tax base. We hate to view everything in mercenary fashion, but sort of unavoidable. We did have some discussion also about what we're going to do in the winter months. Again, these, this planning, these steps are month to month, but we've talked about either allowing the public into the vestibule at the main entrance of Town Hall in the event they need to sign paperwork, but our front-facing offices, namely the clerk, assessors, building, planning, those folks are running in and out of the parking lot, you know, on a pretty regular basis. So, once the elements change, we need to do something to protect them and certainly protect the residents. So, that's under discussion. Our Health Director, who's again a person who's like the Energizer Bunny, she's out straight constantly, a source of energy that astounds me. Anyway, she was recognized statewide by the Massachusetts Health Officers Association, and she received the, what's known as the John Crowley Award for 2020. This award recognizes a person for their contributions to the association through their outstanding leadership and extraordinary service. And that's, I'm reading that from the plaque that she was awarded, which is on display in our office, on her side of the office. It's a quite a beautiful glass sort of trophy, but it really speaks to her dedication and, and the fact that she's now being recognized across the state for those efforts. So, we're very proud of her. Other Health Department news, I think that for the time being, that Shared Health Initiative that we've talked about many times with Long Meadow is on hold indefinitely. I know our Board of Health is not happy about that, or I should say disappointed is perhaps a better way to describe it, but the, the impetus for the tabling, if you will, was the fact that the Health Director in Long Meadow has offered her resignation, and the town felt that it was imperative that they hire a new Health Director to start on January 1st. And obviously, at least in my estimation, there was no way we were going to get this initiative resolved to our mutual satisfaction in that timeframe. So, the Town Manager of Long Meadow and I agreed that we would just table it for the time being. In other Health Department news, I don't know how many of you know this, maybe you all do already, but Elizabeth Bone, who's our Recycling Coordinator, is also a beekeeper. And there was a lovely article in the Springfield paper a week or so ago with her picture in full regalia with the, the hive protection or the stinger protection, kind of an interesting hobby. So that's what she does when she's not worried about recycling. In the meanwhile, she did obtain another grant for the town in the amount of $17,600, which was pursuant to a Green Communities Act. And it, the amount of the grant is based on the credits that the town earned based on its recycling efforts. So Liz gets a lot of credit for that because she is the, she's the recycling guru and takes a lot of calls from people about these issues and does a really great job. So, moving on towards, I'm almost done. The LCAT's in the process of creating a video walkthrough of Town Hall, something that I think Don Mackey has wanted to do for a while. So, he and Jamie and I began that last week, and we did five or six departments the first day, and then a couple of days later, we did another half dozen departments. So, maybe Thursday, we're going to finish up with the Fire Department and IT and School, Gordon's Office. But it's kind of interesting. I've just tried to walk through and introduce the department head and then give that person an opportunity to introduce his or her staff and explain briefly what the department does, just so that the residents, when they opt to watch this video, can get a, a sense of who the people are that they're talking to on the phone and how the operations have continued despite our restrictions due to COVID. Another Don Mackey issue, broadband committee has been meeting, and Don wants to prepare another video for the public's use in terms of trying to consolidate all of the information from various television providers in one place. So my assistant Jennifer is going to help with the, with that project. And I think that should be an asset to the community as we proceed with our general discussions about broadband for the community in general. And last but not, well, second to the last, I wanted to really thank Jeannie. I know she has a report to offer you on the election from this past week, but boy, when I tell you those people in her office, they worked so hard, really for the last, for the whole summer, between the absentee ballots, the requests for write-in ballots, the early voting, the compilation of ballots, the conduct of the election itself. It's truly remarkable to see democracy at work, and they get enormous praise from me for, for the efforts that they put into it. The election went off without a hitch, and I can't thank them enough. They really, really worked hard. So, I don't mean to steal your thunder, Jeannie, because I'm sure you want to praise them too, but they were terrific. And now you can almost walk around in the clerk's office because many of the boxes that contain the ballots and so forth have been dealt with and put away. So, great job done there. And today, I was honored to be invited yet again to the Veterans Celebration that the town put on this year, albeit it wasn't as fancy as last year's when they had a nice dinner at the Council on Aging, but today they conducted a sort of a drive-through luncheon. Frigos donated, I'm sorry, it was Fazio's, I beg your pardon, boxed lunches to all the citizens, all the veterans that came to the so-called parade. They all parked like, it was like a dressing, a drive-in movie theater. It felt a little weird talking to people when you couldn't see anybody because they were all sitting in their cars, but it was a singer there, Noah Liss, who's, I guess, been a contestant on The Voice. He was great, and they had a public speaker set up, and I spoke, John Commerford spoke, Alicia Smith, who's the volunteer coordinator there, spoke, Donnell Tavella made some comments. It was a very lovely event, enhanced, I must say, by the 80-degree temperature because we were out in the parking lot of the COA. So, it was great to honor the veterans, and it really makes you stop and think about, oh, and Terry Gillesko gave some very moving remarks. I don't want to forget him. The, it really makes you think about the, the sacrifice that all veterans made, and it's nice to take some time to honor that. It's unfortunate that, you know, 40 minutes and it was over and done with. So, their service was very meaningful and deserves to be recognized. So I'm glad that COA does that. And that's it for me. So, happy to answer any questions if anybody has one.
Any questions for Mary at this time? Ralph?
Mary, two things. One, the Open Space Plan. I think it's awesome that the state accepted it, and I am so thrilled to hear that that's been completed.
Thank you.
I know part of it years ago when it first started, and it just seems like the state changed what they needed as it went along. We would submit it, and they would send it back and say, oh, well, now you need this or that. And so, to have them finally approve it is great. Congratulations. That's awesome. My other question is, through the recycling, you said we received a grant for $17,600?
Yes.
Any stipulations on how that's spent or what it has to be spent on, or?
Yes, there is a list of approved expenses through this recycling dividends program. You can buy equipment, you can, geez, do some outreach and education. I can forward this to you, Ralph. It's a, it's an entire page that describes all the uses for that money.
I'm just curious if they've decided on what they want to spend it on, or if they were just thrilled just to get it, and they haven't even thought about it yet.
No, I don't, I haven't had any discussion with how we're going to use the money. I know they're thrilled to receive it, for sure. And when it arrives, and it, and the thing is too, it's a, it's a front-loaded grant, so we don't have to spend the money and get reimbursed for it. This is money that comes in in a lump sum. So, you can buy equipment, you can do enforcement coordinator, well, actually, you can use some of it for salary, so that's good news too. But no, we, I've not discussed yet what the uses will be put to, but there are limits, limits on what they are.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Mary, on the subject of the generator, I, I don't know enough about the condition of the Town Hall with regards to the need. I thought that we had a backup system for our IT that was the critical infrastructure piece, and then maybe the driving force behind having a backup. But that brings up the question of, with the failure of the generator at the police station, what have we done to prevent that from occurring again?
That's on the Capitol Plan. I think it's been modified. I think the existing generator has been serviced, so to speak, so that it is operating now. Sorry, I have an arrow on your face for some reason on my screen here. I'm sorry. There was a point on it, I'm sorry. I'd have to check with Bruce as to the status of that, Tom. I don't know as I sit here tonight, but I under, I don't think the police or fire stations were impacted at the last outage, whereas Town Hall was. And, and the problem in Town Hall the other day was that there was a fuse that went on a telephone pole on Maple Street. So, half of the building had no lights, the other half had no internet for a while. Then the internet came back in some offices, but you were trying to type in the dark. It was, it was sort of a comedy of errors, but I think the generator, to my way of thinking, it would be a bigger asset in terms of the remote work that those of us who need to, like when, when the power goes out at Town Hall, if I'm working from home, I cannot access my, my town files through my laptop without going into Town Hall, rebooting the, the hardtop or the, whatever you call it, the hard drive. So, if we had a generator that would do that automatically, then we could continue to function from home, and many of the department heads can do that. It's just kind of a waste of time and effort and lost, lost productivity.
Yeah.
But the specifics of the police station or even the Town Hall, when I, I'd have to defer to Bruce.
There's been discussions for several years, and I know you weren't part of those discussions about providing support for many town buildings by the, the operation of some sort of junction on the outside of the building that a portable generator could be plugged into. The event that the police station is without power, you could plug it in there. Town Hall, plug it in there, as opposed to a fixed generator, which only solves the problem for one building, and we have multiple buildings which could potentially be impacted.
Well, that's a good point, and as I say, Bruce has filed the application, so the particulars or the detail of how that would function, I think, I don't want to say anything about it because I'm sure I'm going to be mistaken in terms of the ability or the power, what it would power and how it would work. So that's not my, my field of expertise, but I would, I can get you that information, certainly.
Well, I think it's just...
And the generator I'm talking about would be no cost to the town, so it's, it's totally funded by a FEMA grant if we in fact get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then we're just back to square one.
Right. It's just important that you know the conversations in the past regarding the needs for generator, and in that discussion, the Town Hall was listed, but it was like number three on the list of three, as far as importance goes. So I think, just so you're aware, and maybe have Bruce look into whether or not we would use a portable generator so that it can be utilized elsewhere.
Okay, I'll have that conversation with him.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Mary. Mary, thank you for the report. Certainly lots of positive information.
Welcome, thanks.
Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review, review the open session meeting from minutes from our October 13th meeting, and if so, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Yeah, seeing no changes, I move to approve the open session minutes of October 13th, 2020.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, this, this is a roll call vote. I am a yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Kathy Hill? Muted? Kathy? Yes, okay.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
The motion passes, thank you. Under Communications, Correspondence and Announcements, I think Jeannie will be able to continue on the information that Mary started to elaborate on regarding the election. Jeannie?
Sure. So, Mary's right, we've been very, very busy, starting with March even with the, the primary, then the local election, and then starting in July with the state primary in September and rolled right into preparations for the state election. Early voting, in-person voting was October 17th to October 30th, including two weekends, and it was steady every day. The lightest day was 141, went upwards to the mid 250s, and the last day, October 30th, during the snowstorm, we had 417 people come through the door, which was astounding. So we had about 25% of the registered voters come early in person, little over 3,000. And then we went into, actually on October 30th, the same day early in-person voting ended, we did advanced removal of ballots. So the state allowed towns to either advance, remove the ballots before Election Day and/or process them before Election Day. And we chose to advance removal because we didn't even think we had the time to process them. It's a whole things you have to do, and it's very time-consuming. So, we worked eight hours straight, me and my staff and volunteers, and we removed almost 6,000 ballots that day. And that includes the early in-person votes, and those were put in bins, sealed and locked into the vaults until they're taken by police officers to the Election Day polling location. The big day was steady. We had a 79.5% turnout, and that includes the 6,000 early votes. The big race, Biden-Harris had 5,260 votes over Trump and Pence with 4,612 votes, again, almost an 80% turnout. The state also allowed us to receive ballots in the mail as long as they were postmarked by the 3rd and received by 5:00 on the 6th. So, my assistant Jackie and I, Monday morning, we removed those ballots and hand-counted those. There were only five. I was surprised there weren't more of them, and we worked really close with the post office to get those ballots by 5:00 to our office so we could stamp them. And also, the post office was excellent getting the... to our office so we could stamp them. And also the post office was excellent getting the all the ballots in on time and delivering them to our door. Six thirty on Tuesday night, the night of the election, so we could get them over to the the polling location after we put them into the recorded them into the state computer system. So now we have until November thirteenth to get the overseas ballots. Those will be put into the tally and then we have until November eighteenth to certify with the state. So all these things you're hearing on television, how long it takes to count these ballots and to do it properly and safely. It's a lot of work. We're still kind of in a fog, but we're swimming through it and we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And I think when I've given my reports for the elections this year, I always end with the gratefulness of everybody, town departments, my staff, volunteers, the election workers. We had probably six to eight new election workers that were just astounded of the process, just learning, you know, in the trenches, what goes on and the safety precautions that were taken. And everybody's enthusiastic energy. And that's why I say it was a good day because it's just a team and village effort. And it was, I'm glad it's over, but it was a good day. So thanks to everybody out there that helped us out.
Thanks, Jeannie. I'd just like to add that during the last month, I'm usually in and out of Town Hall once or twice a week. There's always something to do, sign papers or whatever it might be, post ballots. And witnessing what Jeannie and her staff did inside was incredible to make all that happen with no problems whatsoever. Not to mention that on election day, everybody was pretty much so in place by five thirty in the morning and did not leave Town Hall till after ten o'clock. So it was all of a seventeen hour day and I'd like to thank everybody, Jeannie, her staff and all the residents in town that stepped up to fill the various positions to make this election go off without any problems. So thanks for a great job.
Thank you.
It's now six thirty-three, so we're well within the timeframe to start our first public hearing of the evening. This public hearing is to determine the percentage of tax levy to be done by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. At this time, I can introduce the council members from my left is Pat Henry, I'm Michael Kane. We have Don Anderson, Tom O'Connor, Kathy Hill, Marilyn Richards and Ralph Page. Jeannie, could you please read the legal notice into the record?
Sure. Notice is hereby given in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Sections eighteen through twenty-five, that the East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November ten, twenty twenty, at six ten PM via Zoom webinar. The purpose of this public hearing will be on the issue of determining the percentages of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. All interested East Long Meadow taxpayers are welcome to attend to this hearing using the Zoom link above to present any oral or written comments on the matter. In the event a taxpayer is unable to attend the hearing, written comments may be submitted in advance to Mr. Michael J. Kane, Town Council President, Sixty Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass. Oh one oh two eight. Jeann Arcoletti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeannie. Don, I'm sure you probably see members in the audience and if we could bring them in, convert them from.
Yep. So you should have Diane Bishop, Mr. Johnson, and I believe Mr. Grudging.
Okay, if we could bring.
I'm not sure if Marilyn Godini is on the phone or not. I don't see her name, but it may be her number. But Diane can maybe let me know.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Good. How are you guys tonight?
We're all doing well so far. We'll check back in in a couple hours and see who's still awake, so.
I'll wait to see if Diane and Bill pop on here in a minute. There we go.
There's Diane.
Hi, Diane.
So I would ask the chairperson of the assessors, I see Diane's muted right now. Would you like the opportunity to open the assessors' meeting officially?
Yes, like to open the assessment meeting. Unlike what it says, Kathy Grudging is not in attendance, but Martin Grudging is along with the director Diane Bishop and Bill Johnson hopefully will be joining us soon.
Thanks.
The chairman of the board and Diane is the director of assessing. We're here to talk about for the tax classification. Thank you for having us. It's another tough year, but hard work of Diane and Karen, the office. I think we got a great result. As you know, real estate is incredible these days. Home selling way over asking price, listing price, and of course, they went over assessment price. This is not only in East Long Meadow, but it's all over the country as I have monitored various parts of the country and the state. On that note, our early determination is the residential values will go up three percent. And commercial and industrial this stage will be zero percent. And that has continued now. Keep in mind, this is based on two thousand and nineteen sales and part of the beginning of two thousand and twenty. This trend has continued right through to today. So the increase has kept going. With the help of new growth, which was just under seven hundred thousand dollars. We're glad at this point not set in stone until the end of this evening that our tax rate went up twenty-two cents. Where when six months ago, it was talk of over a dollar. So we went from twenty eighty-four to projected of twenty-one oh six. Which again goes back to the really hard work of Diane and Gary in the office. So values went up and our tax rate went up a teeny bit. Everyone will see a slight increase. But overall, I think the town and town council manager should be very pleased with these numbers.
Thank you.
I will pass it along to Diane now for a little further specifics. I will add one thing. Tom Andrew mentioned twenty-two, twenty-seven new sales. So that'll be part of our new growth next year. That's not part of our new growth this year. We had less new home buildings in two thousand and nineteen. We had some new growth coming from the solar panels that were installed in town. So the new growth will be on a different level. We won't know what it is, of course. But that twenty-seven sales will be a big part of the new growth for next year.
Thank you.
I will start off as I always do that the Board of Assessors is here to provide information to the Town Council for the Town Council to decide on a factor to establish the allocation of taxes. Not only will you decide on a split tax rate or a single tax rate. You could also vote to adopt a residential exemption or a commercial exemption. I'd like to share my screen, although I've never done this before. I think Don Mackey said that I would have that possibility. So I'm going to make an attempt. And if it doesn't work, then I'll just keep speaking. So oops, hang on, share my screen. I have been disabled, so I guess it's not going to work. But we always start with determining what our total.
Diane, sorry. I'll get you in there. I'm just, Jamie was just finishing up the planning board meeting, so all panelists.
Bill Johnson is not in.
Welcome, Bill.
We can hear you, Bill.
Yeah, I couldn't get in for earlier.
Okay. So try sharing Diane. You should be good.
Okay, oops, but I don't know how it's on my desktop. Oh, I just saw it. I'm so. Sorry, this is my technical issues that I have, but I think this should, there. Is it visible?
Yes.
Yes, looks great.
Awesome. Thank you. So whenever we start working on the levy limit that we could utilize for a budget, we always have to start with last year's levy. And you'll see at the very top that the last year's levy was forty-four million, three hundred, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And at that time, our tax rate, as Marty had just recently mentioned, was twenty dollars and eighty-four cents. We are allowed by law to add two and a half percent to the levy, which is the one million, one hundred, eight thousand and thirty dollars. And also, as Marty just mentioned, we did receive new growth and it was certified. And this came from all the new construction remodels, along with businesses who have added more personal property assets to their businesses. And then we get to add our debt exclusion, which brings us to a levy limit of forty-six million, six hundred, eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So please know that our town manager proposed our annual budget well below the maximum levy limit as well as the recommendations from the Financial Oversight Committee in which the Town Council voted. The FY twenty-one annual budget is approximately at forty-four point seven million, leaving, excuse me, leaving a little excuse me, a little over one point nine million of excess levy capacity. So I'm coming back to Zoom, I hope. Ah, wow, I've learned something new. So if the Town Council goes on to the next page, they will see that the tax rate. If we have one tax rate for all properties is projected to be twenty-one dollars and six cents. And they will also see on this page how the tax rate could change if they decided to shift the tax rate anywhere between one to fifty percent. Couple of things I'd like to mention is the average price home in the town of East Long Meadow now sits at two hundred ninety thousand, four hundred dollars. And the average commercial industrial property sits at seven hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred dollars. So if the tax rate was shifted to fifty percent to the commercial and industrial properties, the commercial industrial people, based on that average, would see an increase of eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars in an annual tax where the residential would see a decrease of approximately six hundred and sixty-five. The next page, which gives a historical perspective, will show you that we have been pretty constant in the last ten plus years that the residential levy has been sitting around eighty-two percent. And the commercial, industrial and personal property has been sitting around eighteen percent. I also have provided you a tax comparison of single family homes in neighboring communities. And you can certainly see that we are not the top and we are not the bottom. We're kind of sitting just a hair above the middle. And if you also look at this page, you'll see how much actual total tax levy that these individual communities have shared, have used. Please know that this entire presentation is on the assessors' webpage under Newsflash. So if anyone wanted to see all of these documents, it is readily available for everyone to see. Before I jump into residential exemptions, are there any questions that someone may have? So I will then move on. A residential exemption, there are sixteen municipalities out of three hundred and fifty-one of the Commonwealth that actually has adopted this. They usually reserve this for communities that have a very high rental. And these would be communities in the Boston area, on the outskirts and at the Cape. East Long Meadow is pretty much an owner occupied single family homes. We do have some rentals, but the exemption would not really assist residents to see a big change. The limit would then just get shifted to rental properties. It's all stays within the residential class. So you're not raising more taxes, you're not lowering taxes. We're going to raise the exact same amount. We're just allocating it in a different manner. And then the small commercial exemption, in order to qualify, you would have to have a property, commercial property under one million dollars. And it would have to have no more than ten annual employment employees in order to qualify. And the Division of Unemployment Assistance does provide us with a listing. There may be, and I say may or might be like forty-two properties based on last year that could possibly receive this small commercial exemption. Again, doesn't raise or lower the tax rate for all. It just shifts the tax burden amongst the commercial and the industrial classes. Anyone who did qualify would get a ten percent reduction in overall value. And again, the tax burden would shift. There are only fourteen communities in all of the Commonwealth who have adopted that. So that's what I have to present and I know Marty, myself and Bill, if anyone has any questions, will be happy to address it at this point.
If the presentation is pretty much complete at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Open it to our general public that might be here in the audience as attendees. Don Mackey will be able to and myself will be able to look and see if there's any hands raised. And if there are, we can convert them over to a panelist and actually bring them into the meeting if they have any questions. So Don, are you seeing any attendees at this point that are interested in being converted to a panelist?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, I'm looking at the same and I didn't either. So it's fair to say at this point in time, we can pretty much close the public input portion of this public hearing and open for council comments. Just give me one second to get the screen out of the way here, Tom. When I open multiple screens, I can't see who's in the background, but Tom, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to ask a question. Diane, early on in the process, you were basing everything on a one and a half percent increase?
Valuations?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's nice to see that that's what it's more than double.
Yes, we did come in at a three percent residential increase across the board, which really assisted us, especially as the tax rate was is being developed, that it really brought that down a lot. So that was awesome.
It was. It's nice to see that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other comments for Diane? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Marty, would you like to formally close your meeting at this point in time?
I'd like to make a motion to close the assessors' portion of this meeting. Any discussion? I hear a motion. So moved. Take a roll call vote. Martin Grudging, yes. Bill Johnson, yes. Diane Bishop.
Non-voting.
I'm voting.
Okay. What we'll do now is I take a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Don.
It just says an FYI, I see there's thirteen people watching us on Facebook, but they're on a little bit of a delay. So as a courtesy, I cut and paste the link with our passcode. So if any of them wants to join the audience, they can. But anyway, just put that up on our Facebook page.
Thanks, Don. So I'll entertain a motion to close the council portion of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the council portion of the public hearing on the tax hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, this is a roll call vote as well. Um, Pat Henry?
Yes.
Um, Mike Kane, yes. Don Anderson?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
And Ralph Page?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'd like to, um, enter, entertain a motion, um, to approve the recommendation that Diane Bishop has exhibited.
I move to approve that the town of East Long Meadow adopt for the fiscal year 2021 tax rate, a factor of one, a single tax rate with no residential or small commercial exemptions.
I will second that motion.
A motion's been made. And second, is there any further discussion? Pat Henry?
I would like to thank the committee for putting this together, Diane Bishop and her committee. It's a tremendous job every year. I would like to point out that this would be a terrible year for us to do anything to, that would shift the burden towards the businesses. So I'm in full support of this single tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Uh, roll call vote again. I, I'll start the voting with a yes. Uh, Don Anderson?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
And Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, thank you. Thank, thank Diane, thank you and your staff for, uh, all your, your work.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Great job.
Hey, we are, um, lined up now for our second public hearing. This public hearing is, uh, to propose the establishment of a mixed-use village district bylaw. Before we formally open the public hearing, I would just like to remind everyone in our listening audience that this is about the creation of a bylaw that would allow a mixed use, which is a mix of residential and commercial use on the same property. This bylaw is not, um, specific for the Chestnut Street project. Um, I think it might be helpful if I just lay out pretty much so how I'd like to do this, um, once we, once I formally opened the meeting. And if we all remember, this is a continuation from the public hearing from, um, October, was it October thirteenth? I believe.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, so where we pretty much left off, we were getting into the subject area of council comments. So I'd like to pick the meeting up from the council comments point. And, um, we selected Ralph to pretty much so tally, um, information and that each and every one of us might like to see added to the proposed bylaw that's on the table right now. So, um, w- once we, once we start that, I'm suggesting that Ralph, um, seeing that you collected the, all the votes and I haven't looked at them, I'm sure others haven't viewed them. So for full transparency purposes, um, we will go, go down those line by line. And Ralph, um, rather than the counselors that submitted them, reading their recommendations, if you would, you, we can read them all and then we can, um, find out if there's redundancy and try to knock that list down to, let me just say, maybe three to six items. And once we do that, then I'd like to, um, be able to open our meeting up for public comments. So they'll have a chance to comment on the new list that we'll be working off. And once the comments, uh, those comments, the, uh, public has a chance to comment on those, then I would be looking for a motion on the remaining, uh, questions that we might have. And that motion will be pertaining to being able to open up a conversation or discussion pertaining to the last motions that, um, the list is condensed down to. Um, at that point in time, obviously, once there's a motion on the table and discussion's finished, we can roll call vote to see which, um, items we would like to add to this amended proposed bylaw. Um, after that, um, w-we would have that proposal on the floor and that would be a four-three vote to have those, um, items incorporated into the bylaw. We could close our public hearing and then we would work toward voting to adopt. If we vote to adopt, it, the way that would be done is a super majority vote and a super, super majority vote, otherwise classified as a two-thirds vote, would mean we would need five votes in the affirmative to adopt the bylaw. Um, that being said, I think I pretty much covered it all. I'd like to, uh, open this public hearing at this time. And, uh, again, this public hearing is continued from the thirteenth and is addressed, to address the establishment of a mixed-use village district bylaw. Uh, the council members are, to my left, Pat Henry, I, Mike Kane. Uh, to my right is Don Anderson, below me, Tom O'Connor, Kathy Hill, Marilyn Richards and Ralph Page. Uh, the applicant, um, because this is a continued public hearing, has already, uh, presented this to the case. So, um, I'm gonna continue where we started. We're continuing with council comments and I would ask Ralph, um, if we could start working our way down that list to condense, please.
Sure, Mike.
Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but hopefully it, it helps, uh, in terms of efficiency here, so.
Hopefully I fit into everything. Um, so what we did, obviously, you know, at the last meeting, is asked all the counselors to submit me, uh, some suggestions on language changes. Um, so not only did I receive that, but I also received some different questions, um, a generalized questions that I think the council should hear. So I'm just gonna go through the list without naming any counselors or anything and just give you the suggested changes, um, such as, uh, in section five point three dash B dash seven, uh, paragraph B, um, the suggestion is change the word may to shall. Uh, section five point three B dash eleven, uh, paragraph B would be to change the word shall to may. Uh, five point three B thirteen, in the first sentence, change the word may to shall. Um, in section five point three B thirteen, uh, paragraph B, the third line down, uh, change the word compatible to comparable. Um, there was a suggestion made with regards to, um, the split between commercial and residential that they thought it should be increased to thirty percent. Um, again, we have another one, five point three B thirteen B, to change the word compatible to comparable. So that's a duplicate. Um, in five point three B dash ten B, um, there's to change the word from encouraged to must. Uh, five point three B twelve, um, paragraph A, change wording from encouraged to required. Uh, five point three B dash twelve A, um, change the wording from discouraged to not allowed. Um, then there was a suggestion to put a maximum, um, amount of three-bedroom units, maybe a percentage, uh, maximum, or, you know, let's say ten to fifteen percent on three-bedroom units. Um, under section five point three B, um, there's to remove the word from, which is an additional word in the paragraph. Um, five point three B thirteen, again, change compatible to comparable, which is a duplicate. Um, and again, another counselor has also suggested, uh, possibly changing the ratio of commercial space to closer to thirty percent. I believe now the bylaw states, uh, a range of fifteen to thirty percent. Um, now, something that I, uh, I sent this document to Kevin Duquette to ask him if he had any suggestions on it. And, um, he pointed out, which I didn't even think about, um, section five point three B four, um, not to change any wording or anything, but change the locations of paragraph A and B, just flip-flop the two of them. Um, he, his thought was that we should talk about the total footage before we narrow it down. Footage is. Um, I thought that was a great suggestion. Um, under definitions, um, a counselor suggested, uh, and again, this is additional that you guys don't have on your paperwork that we describe, uh, or give a definition for gross floor area, which is something that we talk about in the document. Um, do you want me to continue right on with some of the questions that, uh, were submitted that weren't really, uh, a specific change?
Well, if it's a duplicate.
Or do you wanna compile this first?
Um, I g-I guess we can get through it and then, you know, based on what you have in front of you, I'm writing down everything as quick as I can, but I would, I would like to see a condensed pile so that we can actually ask for a motion, motion, open up some discussion, um, on, um, however many are raining, remaining, which I would hope would be maybe three to six items, but.
Looks like four, seven, probably eight or nine items, uh, once we condense that. Um, so, uh, but if I go through some of the questions and concerns that people had with the document, um, the wording, uh, multi-family dwellings, um, i-it's one of those, um, please explain why a multi-family dwelling is allowed. Um, an explanation, um, what and how steps like a site plan review and a host, uh, uh, host agreement would occur and if the Town Council has any role in it. Um, uh, there's a with or without clause with regards to residential and commercial being in the same, uh, business. Um, you know, same building. Um, the question is, um, to explain it. Um, like I said, um, the number in mix of each housing types, um, who approves that? In other words, uh, the number of apartments as compared to maybe condos, as compared to townhouses. Um, is there any formula or anything for that? Um, recreational facility, um, is the recreational facility open space, uh, including community buildings, open to the general public? Um, or are they just open to the people that rent or own within the development? Um, uh, fifty-foot height, um, is that, uh, four floors? Um, landscape buffer, um, there's a minimum, uh, frontage, twenty-five-foot landscape buffer. Is that enough distance, uh, for frontage from roadway to blend into the community? Um, there's one, uh, the planning board shall retain overall responsibility and authority for design review approval. Uh, the question is, uh, what's the Town Council's role within that process? Do they have a say, uh, with regards to the design review? Um, the community association, there was concern mentioned over the possibility of possibly a large corporation or a single owner buying a bunch of the units and basically having a lot more control over the whole development. Um, um, three bedrooms, uh, comes up in the discussion. If we're looking to focus on housing for our seniors and adult professionals, um, do we really need to allow three bedrooms within, uh, the development? Um, a corporate organization or ownership, um, again, it's the same, uh, concern as above. I, I think it pretty much hit, um, all the questions and all that were presented. Um, I don't know if, if we wanna take the suggested changes, like one at a time and say, hey, do we think in general, is that a good idea? And I'll make check marks against them so that when we go to make a motion to include or exclude, we'll have that. Does that make sense?
Um, I did, I, Ralph, I do see a couple of hands up here from other council members. Um, so th-that conversation will be committed, but I'd like to start with Pat.
Uh, Mike, with respect, I'm not sure we got what you were looking for. When you say you're trying to reduce the number, these are, for the most part, different suggestions that they couldn't really be reduced to a number because they're different topics, different subjects. Me, we may shell in one paragraph, may shell in another paragraph and many other different, and many different questions. So I'm not sure we got the ability to bring it down. So I would favor Ralph's suggestion that we discuss each one and, and get rid of it or approve it from, for, for further action.
Um, I, I would agree with you. Uh, until he read them, I didn't know what we were dealing with because I did not open it up and look at it prior to the meeting. So, um, there, I was thinking that there might be a lot of duplication and if there was duplication, we could scale it down. But it's pretty obvious that even these shall or mayes are pertaining to a different subject matter. So we're not gonna be able to just push them aside. So I agree. Marilyn, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Um, with respect to the list of questions, if there's a desire, I mean, you would almost intes- anticipate that there are counselors that are asking these questions. We have three committee members on the council. I think that between Don, Ralph and myself, we could probably run through these very quickly because a lot of these things we have discussed within our own committee meeting. But that's just my suggestion to move things quickly ahead. Um, whatever you wanna do is fine.
Um, I would, I would agree and also take other comments from, um, any other council members at this point that, um, before, like I said, before I opened this up, um, for public comments, let's see what we can do with this list, find out what's relevant or a duplication and then we'll be able to move forward. But it's, it's not gonna be quick and easy because there's a lot of diversity between the information that Ralph has disseminated. So, Don?
Uh, another thought could be addition through subtraction. Let's go through the entire bylaw and say, okay, five point three B mixed-use village dis-district. Any comments from anyone on this? No? Okay. Five point three B one, general description. Any comments? None. Then the next one, you don't have to read them, but just say, and then if we hit something, it's almost like the old town meeting, when someone goes, question, then we will address it. Just a thought.
Pat?
Uh, thank you. Uh, that's a, a great suggestion made by Counselor Anderson, but I'm not sure that these questions are in the order. All, I'm not sure all the questions are in the order, so people wouldn't really know without looking carefully what, which, which section they were talking about. So I would prefer to see the list, I would prefer to see us just follow the, the questions as Ralph has given them to us.
Kathy?
I would echo Marilyn's, um, remarks about asking the three counselors who, uh, put in those hours of work on the subcommittee to take those questions one by one and quickly give us, uh, an answer and try to distill all of that into maybe a ten-minute conversation in total. I think that, uh, some of those answers, based on what I'm looking at for the questions, are pretty straightforward.
Okay, um, I don't have the list in front of me.
Mike, I've got it. If you want, I'll just start at the top. There's, I don't know, ten, twelve questions. I'll ask the question and then let, uh, the members go through it if that works for you.
It, it does. It's just gonna be longer, a longer list than I anticipated, but we're following the same, uh, protocol. So, uh, anytime you're ready.
Okay, the first question had to do with definitions. Uh, multi-family dwellings, please explain why this is allowed. Uh, sounds like a duplex, uh, which are usually built to house families with children.
Marilyn?
Thank you. Um, the definition of multi-family dwellings is currently in our zoning bylaw and it's listed dwellings, comma, multi-family. This, um, language was created with the, um, adoption of the planned unit residential bylaw as well as a planned adult residential bylaw. It references units that are attached, one bedroom, two be, I mean, one unit, two bu, two units or three unit attached. It does not indicate anything ha-having to do with development with on, on a residential zone where single-family houses. Um, this doesn't support duplexes being built within the town of East Long Meadow on a, a parcel of land. It's simply a direct. It simply addresses what's happening in these special use regulations. Also, in our definitions, the very first thing it says, definitions are provided strictly for clarification and are not to be interpreted as permissible or allowed unless stated in the table of uses within the zoning bylaws. So that should address that.
Thanks, Marilyn.
You're welcome.
Question number two was regards to section 5.3B. Please explain what and how the steps like a site plan review and a host agreement would occur in the process? And what, if any, role the town council has with it?
Don?
Yeah, basically, basically what it means is what the petitioner would have to do is go for site plan approval through the planning board as well as special permit. And they could be run concurrently, provided that process runs its course, goes through the requisite approval hearings, so forth. At the end, there's a requirement to have the host community agreement. The host community agreement would be negotiated between our town manager as well as the petitioner. That cannot simply be approved by the town manager. It would then have to come to the full council for us to approve the end product. So that's what our involvement would be as a council. Did I miss anything?
No, I don't believe so. Thanks.
The next question would be with regards to section 5.3B1. It says, please explain the why, why the with or without clause. So let me grab that section 5.3B1. So, including single-family, mixed-use village development shall mean a development consisting of a mixture of residential, commercial and business uses and building types, including singly, single-family dwellings, townhouses, multi-family dwellings, with or without attached business or commercial spaces, business and commercial buildings, recreation facility and open space. So if it's okay, I'm going to grab this. What this is basically saying is that some buildings can have just a residential component. Some may have just a business component and some may have a mixture of both residential and business. A good example of something like that, which would be, let's say, my doctor's office is on the first floor and my residence is up above, which my dentist in Chickaby is just like that. It may be, you know, as far as having all business, you may have two floors with retail down below and office space above. That's really where we're getting the with and or without residential and business.
Thanks, Ralph. Pat?
Did I miss anything?
Thank, thank you, Mike. I looked at that myself and I thought that that expression was redundant. I thought that it could be removed and the, and the bylaw would be just fine without it. It's just a person.
Okay.
So that was question three. For Ralph?
So question four is section 5.3B3. When are the number in mix of each housing types discussed and who approves them?
Marilyn?
Much depends on who the applicant will be and the model that they propose in terms of the design. I mean, it can be anything. And so at that time, the number and the mix of each housing type would probably be known to the planning board. Through special permit, the planning board has the privilege and the responsibility to make modifications if there is a suggestion that there's too much of one use and not enough of another. So that's yet to be determined.
Thank you. And Ralph?
Yep. The fifth question is again, section 5.3-B-3, item E. Is the recreational facility, open space, including community buildings, open to the general public? Not folks that rent or own in the development?
Marilyn?
Don had his hand up. He can speak.
Basically, yeah, this is, think of it as a, the village. I mean, I mean, they could opt to have walking trails available to the general public, but typically they're paying the fees and part of the association. So to develop and encourage open space, this bylaw would recommend, would have that they have community buildings. So a community building could be where residents and businesses can have, you know, meetings and so forth. Movie nights, what, I don't know, you know, whatever the gambit is. And the recreational facility in open space would be, the focus would be on the people who are paying the dues and the fees to use it. Now, again, if they choose that it's something that they want to welcome the public to, that's their prerogative. But it, you know, that's my understanding.
Thank you. I guess Ralph, six?
Number six, 5.3B5, item D. Number four is the height of 50 feet. That's four floors. Why are we allowing a four-floor, 50-foot-high building to be built?
Marilyn?
This, this particular component triggered a lot of discussion within the committee simply because of the 50-foot requirement or a 50-foot, 50-foot request. A hybrid formula was initiated and placed within the bylaw for the height. And that wherever the mixed-use village district was created, whatever zone it was created in, that project would adopt the height requirement of the former zone. In this case, the height requirement for the industrial garden park is 50. So there's a maximum of 50 feet in the industrial garden park only. If you were to take a 40-acre parcel, say, in the midst of the residential zone, the height requirement would only be 35 feet, which is what brownstone gardens looks like. That reflects what the maximum height of residential would be. The commercial district, it would be 40 feet. The business district, it would be 45 feet. So depending on where a proposed district may be considered, it would reflect the zone where the district is being replaced.
Thank you.
Okay. Question number seven, 5.3-B-5, item G. Number three is landscape buffer. There's a minimum front landscape buffer of 25 feet. The question is, is this enough distance for frontage from roadway to blend into the community? Are we talking about a buffer like the one at the Fields at Chestnut? So if I may, Mike, the landscape buffer is the area that has to be landscaped in front. This isn't a setback of the buildings. The setback is completely different. As a matter of fact, we've increased it. It's actually the largest setback off of the road. And we did that on purpose because we wanted, we didn't want it on top of the road. We wanted it back and we wanted plant material and landscaping to be in between so that it's not as harsh of a feeling between it. Did I miss anything, Don or Marilyn?
The only, the other operative word is minimum. And if the specific site plan is along a, you know, a particular street and they feel that the minimum is insufficient, the planning board can expand on that, correct?
Yeah.
I actually have a question, Ralph. I'm just curious. The, that area, is that, is that include the tree belt as well?
I, I would think that, excuse me, I would think that that's exclusive of the tree belt. I think the developer has control of land that they own and control.
Exactly.
With permission of the town to use the tree belt, that would be additional buffer, but that's just my take on it.
Right. And for, just for clarification purposes, I believe that the tree belt is a minimum of 15 feet. So essentially you would have approximately 40 feet if you add it to the 25 feet, a 25-foot minimum.
And assuming, and assuming it's one of those places that was established when we had tree belts, some of the, you know, older parts may not have as a, they have a 10-foot one or maybe something different. But you're correct, all the newer streets and so forth do have more expansive tree belts.
And it's from the actual, their property line. So different areas, like different streets, you may have 40-foot of asphalt, but you have a 60-foot right of way. So it's actually from their property line. So even though there's a minimum frontage, it may end up feeling like it's even more depending on that.
Thanks.
So question number eight was 5.3B8. Next to the last sentence, it says, the planning board shall retain overall responsibility and authority for design review approval. The question is, what's the town council's role in that process?
Marilyn?
Um, the, the authority lies with the planning board as in that part of the process. And with design review and with the special permit and site plan review, there are certainly public hearings and counselors can, as residents, show up and make comments. I'm also hopeful that with, in the near future, that we will establish a, a defined committee to address the issue of design review. Right now, we don't have one, so it falls to the planning board. Hopefully that'll change in the future. But it's their responsibility. They have the authority.
That's good. Thanks. And nine?
Number nine, section 5.3-B-9, community association. The concern is over the possibility of a large corporation or organization or an owner purchasing multiple apartments, townhouses, buildings, whatever, and subletting them and have numerous voting rights that would override other unit owners of the apartments and townhouses. How can we protect against this potential possibility?
Don?
That's, that came up. In fact, I brought that, I brought that up. First of all, you, you can't, if you have a situation, I'll use, I'll use the hypothetical of the, of a proposed project that may go in the package machinery area. The thought was, it's going to be a mix of apartments as well as condominiums. And as we know with condominiums, you know, Mass. General Law's 183 controls condominiums and they have to have an association themselves as a condominium. Apartments, if they're held by the developer, are not part of that condominium association. So what you have is a subset of an entire association for maintenance and so forth within the four corners of the project that will consist of voting rights of the condo association and their members and members of the owners and whether they have ownership, anyone has ownership rights in any of the businesses. I don't know if the businesses are going to be sold or whether they're going to be exclusively rented. That remains, you know, that's to be seen. And if someone has that kind of control of, you know, owning the apartments, they should have the ability to have awaited voting rights as, as well. And I don't think that's an inherent problem in and of itself, but that's just my take.
Thanks, Don.
So, Don, if I can add to that, the community association, let's say with the condominiums. I mean, I deal with some community associations and their votes and stuff are going to be basically on like maintenance, snow plowing. It's not on like number of units that can be developed or anything like that. That, that's all under the planning board purview. Most of the community association deals with maintenance and, you know, other small rules where people can have flags or something like that.
Ralph's correct. I mean, it might be just a function of, if it's a condominium, it's not going to be maintained by the people who sold the condos. It's going to be maintained by the association. So they're going to be voting perhaps at some future date whether to replace the siding, put new windows in, new roof and so forth. But that's a subset of the collective association that's going to be taking care of everything in total.
Much like the Elms condominium.
And it just, just, just a little more convoluted, if you will, because you have the Elms, but the Elms doesn't have any developer-owned rented units that are not part of the chapter, the statute that creates the condominium. So you can have a condominium within non-condominium ownership at the same time. It's certainly a hybrid.
Okay.
So Mike, going on, I think, I think on the sheet, like basically questions 10, 11 and 12 are suggested word changes, which I have listed on the other sheet. So I'm going to jump right to number 13, which is why three bedrooms? When many, many of the discussions are focused on housing for our seniors, older professional or adult professionals looking to downsize, young adults that may not need three bedrooms. The thought process is three bedrooms may encourage families with children, which would have an impact on the school system. And how, I, I guess the question basically comes down to how did we decide to go as high as three bedrooms? And what was the basis for it? If I can paraphrase.
Marilyn?
When we discussed bedrooms, we limited the apartments, one to two bedrooms maximum. So that would take care of a certain complement of the residential units. Three bedrooms for town, townhomes and condominiums was felt to be reasonable. I have four and I haven't put any children in the school system lately. It's what we, what people choose to use these extra rooms for. And, you know, we shouldn't be legislating how people live their lives. Three bedrooms is reasonable for a condominium, whether it's a family or whether it's a empty nester couple. The same with a townhome. And we're not trying to hamstring any developer from being able to market what they're trying to, to offer. So that's why three bedrooms.
So Mike, I'm going to jump in and also discuss the three bedrooms. My concern when the bylaw was crafted was what effect is it going to have on our school? We've got the potential of a full buildout of 480 residential units. That sounds to me like there's going to be a huge influx of children. And that was my driving force with trying to get a host community agreement. Because within the host community agreement, the town manager can discuss this with the developers and come up with a baseline and say, well, you know, let's say 50 students would be allowed from the development, but possibly anything above that. There's going to be a, what do I want to say? You're going to have to contribute to the town school system, you know, financially to offset this. I think the host community agreement played a huge role in this because I'm not really concerned about the size of the unit. I'm concerned with the effect that it has on the town. And I thought that was a real good way to offset that.
Okay.
Pat's got a question.
I'm sorry, Pat?
Oh, Pat, you're muted.
Thanks. Didn't do that on purpose. I don't know where that came from. I thought of controlling the risk that we put all of the risk in the host community agreement would be to limit the number of three-bedroom condos as well. I hear Marilyn's. I hear Marilyn's response that the builder needs to determine that and the numbers of people who have no children who still want three bedrooms are many, but my concern is why couldn't we adopt a, say, no more than 20% of the apartment, of the condominiums would be three-bedroom, and I guess I heard the answer that the committee felt that that would be too restrictive.
Thank you, Mike. Also, through the chair, Pat, when, when the planning board has an opportunity to look at a future application, they'll get an idea of what's being proposed, and if it's, if the consensus is that it's maybe too much for that particular location or for the town, special permit gives them the privilege of negotiating and perhaps modifying those numbers.
Okay, the last question I had has to go back to corporate organization ownership, which is basically the same as number nine above, which had to do with if a corporation decides to come in and buy a large number of these, again, they're going to be, have a more of a vote than a single owner would, and it's a concern, I see. I think with the community association, based on the fact that association deals with more individual stuff, snow plowing, maintenance and stuff, I wasn't as concerned about the ownership of them, but again, I know we discussed this in length on, I mean, multiple times at multiple meetings.
Don?
I think there's some inherent limitations on some third-party corporation coming in and buying condominiums, because you're certainly, unless you buy the entire project from the developer or what's, or their ownership interest, those are going to be ostensibly apartments. Condominiums, after they're sold, are going to be individually owned, and if one person wants to buy a lump, some of them, that creates a chilling effect on certain types of mortgages. If one single owner has that much control, they're going to likely be using it for rental purposes, so they're going to take the condos, which are likely to be the most expensive item to, I mean, property to buy in this, in these developments, and then turn them into rental units, that's going to create a negative effect, because you're going to have FHA and so forth looking at the project of the condo project within the big project and perhaps not affording loans over because of that control. So the three bedrooms and so forth, these are going to be pricey units, it's not going to be, I'm not anticipating cheap condominiums being sold over there, so I don't believe it's going to be attractive to this situation. I've seen one situation in Springfield where a particular condominium project has so much single ownership that unless you're paying for cash or a certain type of loan, you can't really just go in and buy it because of that control. I'm not seeing this type of project, I, I see these, the three-bedroom type condos to be a more market rate and would, would probably be, would, would by it in and of itself, limit that kind of people, you know, people coming in and doing that.
All right. What do you get next, Ralph?
So that was the end of the basic questions, and I think we were pretty much able to, as a group, answer the questions to the best of our ability. I would guess that the next thing that we want to do is go through and item by item to see if the council's interested in making the different word changes and see where we stand with that. I don't know, Mike, if you want to try and take a vote on each or just a general consensus for now?
I'd rather take a general consensus so that we can knock it down, and then, as I previously stated, then maybe entertain public comments, and then we would move toward motions for the purpose of discussion to tweak the bylaw or amend the proposed bylaw.
Okay, so if you want me to continue, if everyone's got the actual document, I'll go through section by section as I have the items listed. I am going to start with the suggestion I got from Kevin Duquette, which is under section 5.3-b-4, which is business and commercial uses, that's on page two of the document. His suggestion was simply to take paragraph B and make that paragraph A, take paragraph A and make it paragraph B, there's no other changes, it's just a location thing.
Okay, so if we're going to identify this later as something for a motion, do we just want to tag this as, start, start our new list with number one?
Yeah, that works.
Pat?
I would suggest that if we took a preliminary caucus vote, so to speak, and five out of seven of us said, "No, we don't want it," we could just eliminate it off the list. If, if five out of seven of us said yes, then we put it on the list, but otherwise, we really, how can you tell whether to put it on the list?
Right, well, we, we have to do that, yeah, so, do we, do, we want to entertain, we want to take that caucus vote right now while the subject matters?
We could do it with hands.
Can I make a quick question, just to the chair? Ralph, by making the move from A to B, B to A, there's, I don't think, and help me with my memory, I don't think any other part of the document refers back to those original things, right?
I double-checked that, Don.
I was checking myself, going, I said, you know.
Yep, no other part of the document refers back to that specific section, so there's no problem with the switch.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm not sure what the reasoning is, but yeah, I'm fine.
He just thought that you should talk about gross floor area first and distinguish how much that is before you start breaking down into the uses and how that is, he thought it flowed better.
Sure.
Does it, is it fair to say, show of hands versus, versus this subject matter, any affirmative status? Is that, is that Marilyn? And Ralph? Oh, okay, you're racing.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So, easy enough. Okay, the next one, section 5.3-b-7, which is page four, and it's under subsection D. So it reads, "Planning board may require additional visitor parking spaces beyond the one space per bedroom." The suggestion is that it should read, "The planning board shall require additional visitor parking spaces beyond the one space per bedroom if deemed appropriate, given the design, layout, and density." I think it just makes it a little bit more affirmative.
Show of hands, please.
I have a comment.
Hand, okay. Pat, go ahead.
I have a comment, I just found that the word "shall" would not be compatible with the term "if," and I think that's why they designed it to say "may," "may if," because "shall" leaves the "if" kind of hanging out there by itself.
Don?
I, I think the original intent of the language with the "if" is giving more discretionary power to the planning board, so they see that, that the, given the design layout and density, you know, perhaps should, you know, may need more parking, they can look at other options, whether it's a temporary designated area for future parking without making them asphalted and turn it into parking, and as well as reserve parking for the future, so it gives more control to the planning board for flexibility, looking at the circumstances. Whereas with the new change, and again, I'll defer to the council, of course, if they say, the council, if the planning board says, "Given the design, layout, and density, there really cannot be a creative parking solution," you shall, must put in new parking spaces, not even any type of temporary-based approach or things of that nature, you have to do it, is what the new language, if that's what we want, that's what we want.
Okay, are we ready for a show of hands with this, or? Ralph, what's, what's the?
I'm ready for a show of hand, so the suggestion is to change the word "may" to "shall," and if we think that it should be done, we'll raise our hand, if not, keep your hands down.
Okay, we're ready.
I think we have our answer.
So, I can circle "may," we're going to stay with the language "may," correct?
Yeah, no change on that one. Okay, section 5.3-b-11, which is on page six of the document, paragraph B, the way it reads right now is, "A bus stop for regional bus, rapid transit bus, shuttle bus, and/or ride services shall be provided for public or private transport." The suggestion is to change the word "shall" to "may," so it would read, "A bus stop for regional bus, comma, rapid transit bus, comma, shuttle bus, and/or ride services may be provided for public or private transport." I think this just gives the opportunity as if it's something that the developer feels is needed, that they can put it in, if they feel it's not needed because of the design and layout, that they don't have to put it in.
Pat, you have a question?
No, I just have a comment that in, in the case of a new developing, putting the bus stop in early is a lot cheaper than trying to fit it in without it being in the plan later on, and I think the idea always was to have it there, so I like the idea that it shall, they shall establish the bus stop, whether it's used or not, my comment.
Don, did I see your hand up earlier?
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at the whole village concept, all right, it's, as you guys pointed out earlier, it's better to have it in the, in the design that it shall. For instance, let's say this association decides to have bus trips to New York City to see the Broadway shows or even the casino in Springfield, if it's not part of the design in the onset, you're going to have situations where these buses are going to be picking people up on the main street, okay, and that's, I think it's better designed to have a provision for Uber drive, you know, drivers to go to, Lyft drivers, as well as bus, a bus stop, whether it's public transportation, PVTA, or more likely than not, community groups within the membership of the, of the, you know, the residents going out and making road trips elsewhere, I think it's just good design.
So the current language, Ralph, is, is it "may" or "shall"?
"Shall." The current language, "shall," 5.3b11, B, the current language says it shall be provided for public or private transport.
Okay, so I guess we can, do a show of hands to leave it as "shall" or to amend to "may"?
So why don't we do a show of hands to leave it as "shall," that would be in the affirmative then. Okay, the next one is 5.3-b-13, which is page eight, and in the first sentence, the suggesting, suggestion is change the word "may" to "shall" again, so it reads, "Affordable housing units are units which may only be rented or purchased by eligible households who annual incomes adjusted for family size do not exceed the limits for maximum annual income." So we're under the affordable housing section, so the suggestion is, instead of saying "may only be rented," it says, "Affordable housing units are units which shall only be rented or purchased by eligible households." Any thoughts?
Which may only be rented.
I mean, in this situation, I'm reading it, and I don't think there's really any difference between "may" and "shall."
Through the chair, I agree with Ralph.
If I can jump in, it, the whole intent there is driven by the formula, so "may" as well is, is really irrelevant.
Exactly.
Marilyn, did Kathy, you're on board with Kathy?
Kathy read my mind.
Okay, so we want to, we want to show hands for no action on this item?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay, section 5.3-b-13, paragraph B, the third line down, it's changed the word "compatible" to "comparable," this was brought up by three different counselors, and actually, I believe when it was read the last time at the second reading, it was accidentally read as comparable, and it made a lot more sense, and I never picked up on it. So the, the line says, "Affordable housing units shall be compatible in design, appearance, construction." The suggestion is to change that to "Affordable housing units shall be comparable in design, appearance, and construction."
Yeah.
Pretty much think with a show of hands, it's a no-brainer to make the change, so affirmatively, we want to make it? You have a yes? We're going to go back to 5.3-b-10, and paragraph B, the suggestion is to change from encouraged to must. Sorry, I was on the wrong.
Do you have a question? Don?
Yeah, I mean, from back in my, my planning board days, I remember developers which not want to go through the expense of a preliminary site plan, they would go right to the definitive site plan, because it's just, just from the cost and so forth, so, I mean, we can encourage them to go for the preliminary, but if they want to go for the more detailed definitive site plan, I don't have a problem with that, if, I correct Marilyn and, you know, and Ralph?
I agree.
So, Don, the only thing I've got is, the heading of this is "Procedures and Pre-Application Review," so if this is a pre-application review, in order to review something, you've got to give them a preliminary plan, and that's only from looking at the heading of 5.3b-10.
Through the chair, but if they want to go through the expense of having the detailed definitive site plan and submit it early, it's accomplished the same result, just.
It does, okay.
Pat?
My feeling on this one, Mike, was that it's, a project of this nature is so large that a preliminary plan would seem to be more appropriate, and I understand Counselor O'Connor, I mean, Counselor Anderson mentioning other projects, but this is a huge project, and I would think the preliminary plan would be more appropriate.
Marilyn?
A preliminary plan doesn't guarantee that the definitive will reflect the same things you did. things you discussed. There's always a possibility for things to change. Without the preliminary, the preliminary plan actually helps the developer. If they want to do the expense, it helps the developer because they come in and they get a feel for what the planning board is going to accept. The, the nuts and bolts of it is with the definitive plan. And I don't, you know, I don't think it's, it's fair to require the expense if the developer just wants to come forward with a definitive.
I just want to add a comment here. So it sounds like you're, you're on board with let the developer pick the method that they choose, whether it's preliminary or definitive, so.
Well, they have to do a definitive eventually. It's their choice if they want to come in earlier with a preliminary.
Uh huh. Okay.
So I, I guess the vote would be in the affirmative, if we want to leave it, that applicants are encouraged to submit, I would say raise your hands if you want them where they're forced to submit under must, then keep your hand down. Does that make sense? So if you want to say that applicants are encouraged, which is no change, raise your hand. Okay. This one. Okay, section 5.3-B-12. Page seven. It is paragraph A. The suggestion is to change the wording encouraged to required. So this is. This would be line three under paragraph A, which it says diverse roof styles and heights are encouraged and should complement the surrounding developed environment. That's currently the way it reads. What the suggestion is, is to change to diverse roof styles and heights are required and should complement the surrounding developed environment.
I'm sorry, Ralph, where are you again?
It's section 5.3B-12.
Right.
Paragraph A.
Right.
And it's the third line down.
Got it, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Trust me, it took me a minute to find it again. So.
Is it identified as page seven to help people find it quicker?
Yes.
Yes. So diverse roof styles and heights are encouraged and should complement the surrounding developed environment. That's the way it's worded. The suggestion is to change it to diverse roof styles and heights are required and should complement the surrounding developed environment. What's up, Tom?
Through the chair, my, I'm fine with the language. I think what we're trying to do from a planning point of view, I would think, is try to encourage creative design, try to encourage the New England look, but also being reflective that we do have a design review component. Now, I remember, and Marilyn remembers, when we, we actually had a design review board, but as, you know, our town manager Mary says, it's, it's, it's a challenge to fill some of these spots, so nature pours a vacuum. So that vacuum is the design review board ends up being the planning board. So I think when we say they must do this, it takes away all creativity. It may, it means that a project off, say Chestnut Street would look ostensibly the same as one in another part of East Long Meadow. I want to encourage, this is just me speaking for myself, I think we should try to foster and encourage creative design as this evolving design of what East Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, as well as architecture of New England character architect, architecture is.
Yeah.
I would support that.
Mike?
Tom, you got a question, go ahead.
Yeah. I don't know if Mike can hear me.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed, missed your hand.
No, I heard what Don said, but the way the, the sentence reads, it says diverse roof styles and heights are encouraged or required and should complement the surroundings. It already says that. All this word change does is rather than encourage, which leads it up to the developer to decide what they want to put in, to must, because we don't want flat roofs, we don't want, you know, small peaks, we don't want common looks. We want, as the sentence states, should complement the surrounding development, developed environment. So if we're going to require that, let's, let's make it a must.
Don?
However, a member photographer friend once told me, says all rules apply except when they don't. There might be a situation with a particular type of business coming in. You know, Whole Foods, you know, I'm making this up, folks, so don't, don't run with this. Or Trader Joe's, or what have you, it's just hypothetical. Let's say their, their design is for flat roofs, and it's a small component of the overall scheme. Yeah, it may, let's say it works in the whole scheme of things. I don't want to box them out just because that, they'll say, listen, you're right, we don't want flat roofs, but in this particular case, for this one instance, it actually, it works in the, in the whole scheme of things. And I just, again, I'm just thinking that, you know, are we, are we curtailing creativity or not? Again, I, I'm, it's not a, not a make or break either way. I'm fine, you know, with, with the mandatory language, but I'm just trying to foster, I feel there's more opportunity for creativity and encouraging businesses to come in with that flexibility.
I, I would just like to make a comment on some of these commercial buildings. You can build a peak in the front of it, but it's not actually part of the roof. It's there for aesthetic purposes only. And you, you might need a flat roof in the back for HVAC when you're running air conditions, there's an equipment like that that needs to be outside. So from the street side, you're going to see a peak, but it's just a wall, and behind that wall is the flat roof, which would be conducive with the HVAC.
Creative design.
Really gets into the next question, Mike. I think this is the styles and whether we're going to mandate or we're going to encourage. So I tried to break that down into two, but it's the same paragraph that there's two separate questions on.
I was looking.
I think, if I may, through the chair.
Please, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, both questions really address what we've been, what we've discussed many times, and that is, we don't want to see mid-range housing with flat roofs going in. And I think to, to use the, the weak language of encourage or discourage allows too much flexibility unless, as Don stated earlier, this design review committee is reconvened and has the opportunity to address some of those issues. What I don't want to see is flat roof lines throughout the town.
Marilyn?
The committee struggled with this, actually worked very hard on this language, and I support it as it's written. The whole, you know, thrust of it is that we're looking for a project that does blend in with the look and feel of East Long Meadow and recognize the surrounding environment where it's going to be developed. However, to ban flat roofs, as Don said, there's, you know, this is a combination of a number of uses, and there may be some smaller areas that might welcome a flat roof. I mean, I just envision no flat roofs and just see all these peaks going up like jagged rooftops. There needs to be some ability for the developer to use their talents, and we have, we can say no if we don't like how it looks. So, and we, meaning the planning board and the design review. So those are my thoughts, and thank you.
Well, there's a design review committee, which we all know there will be at some point in time. Hopefully, that would be our safety net to find out what, what, what application is being presented. And like I said, for whatever nature of business goes in there, the building has to, has to be able to enable, enable things like HVAC to be able to work.
Yeah. And through the chair, I, I mean, I agree, and I would support not changing any of the language, as long as we have a design review committee created to have some oversight on this issue.
Okay.
So if it's okay, we do, Mike, I'd like to combine both of those questions and basically say if, if we agree to leave the language the same, raise your hand, because they both talk about complementing roof lines, basically, whether we're going to mandate to do it a certain way, or we're going to give the developer, encourage him to do diversity.
Glad to. And before we do the show of hands, Don, I saw your hand to go up.
No, I, I was mentioning that we do have a design review committee, and that's called the planning board, when we don't actually have a formal design review committee. So design review is an extra component that the planning board members have to, you know, to end their reviews, not simply looking at the, dot the i's and cross the t's. They also have a design review. If we end up creating a design review, as was the original intent from years ago, that will be a fresh set of eyes looking at it, and that would be great. But if we cannot get people to get on that, that additional hat is currently being worn by the planning board. So there is a design review committee, the planning board, but I would love to have people in the audience, you know, put in, recommend, you know, put their names in to, through, you know, our town manager to resurrect a real design review committee. That would be, that would be outstanding, but we do have one.
Right. Okay, Ralph, you want to go back?
I would say with a show of hands, anyone that wants to leave the wording as is, if you would show your hands, that would be awesome on this. Great. And again, as I said, because they're both basically the same dealing with roof lines, that would be those, both of those questions. The next one would be 5.3-B, which is on page one. It's the mixed-use village district. And on the second line down, I'm going to start in the middle, it says special permit with site plan review and design review from as specified in sections. The suggestion is to remove the word from. I don't know how it got in there.
Your fault.
It's got to be me, because I was the one that wrote up the original document, so it's just remove the word from. It, it doesn't do anything to design review as specified, it should say. So I don't think there really need any discussion on it. If you want to show your hands if you don't like it and you want to remove the word. Good enough. Yes, we're going to remove that word. I'm, I'm leaving a couple of these on purpose, because I think a couple of them are going to get into a lot more conversation. So I'm going to jump down to one that wasn't on the list. And I will tell you with myself, there's a discussion in here on total gross floor area, which would be on page two, it's 5.3-B-4. Under, at the moment, it's paragraph B, it states total gross floor area devoted to commercial and business uses shall not be less than 15% nor exceed 30% of the total gross floor area of mixed-use village development. Currently, I found that in our definitions that we're going to add, and our existing definitions, there is no description as to what gross floor area means. I thought it was basic, easy, common sense until I Googled definitions, gross floor area, and literally, I mean, probably 50 different ones popped up on how to calculate gross floor area, what the meaning was, whether addicts were included, whether they weren't. There were so many different definitions that I would like to see us add one. I found one, I think it's short and sweet and to the point. If you don't mind, I'll read it. It says gross floor area means the aggregate of floor areas of all stories of a building or structure, comma, other than an attic or a cellar, excluding the floor areas of any private garages. It said, I'm, I'm not looking to get into any huge definition, and I know every development's different, but I think with this, it basically tells you that gross floor area is the aggregate of each floor. So if you have a three-story building, you're basically taking the ground floor and multiplying it by three. I feel as though we need a definition, but I wanted to bring it to the board and see what you guys thought.
So when you said ground floor times three, that would assume that the same square footage, that the building does not taper as it goes up. So for, for the public viewing in, it's much like a residential home. We, we don't count basement unless it's completely finished. We don't count the attic because it's unlivable. You know, our assessors know how to calculate gross living space when you're calculating that with your house, and I believe that's what the intent is here, but for further clarification, you might want to add the language that you're talking about.
Through the chair, I, I would agree with Ralph. I think, you know, for further clarification, his suggestion's a good one.
Right, and this all trickles back to that if we're looking at, no matter how you cut it up, if we're looking at a total of about 700,000 square feet of, of space when this project is completed, if you are working off the 15% number, you'd be looking at approximately 105,000 square feet at 15%. On the upper end of the scale here at 30, obviously, you'd be looking at 210, which is double the 105. But the 700-foot number is, is what's imperative to be able to calculate, and that 700 number is, is diverse, as Ralph was saying, between each structure on, on the gross living space on floor one, floor two could be less, but when you add them all together, we're looking at approximately 700.
On a total, oh, sorry. I see other hands popped up first.
Don?
Just, just for, do we want to add that to section eight definitions, or do you want that definition within this, the, the section referring to gross floor area?
So my, my request, my, my thought would be to add it to section eight definitions.
Yeah, I agree.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. My question is simple, it's just, does this only apply to commercial space, or is this, is this the whole project?
Well, the 30% is a percentage, is a percentage of the total amount. So if we looked at the total amount of space being 700, if you were to work off 30% of that, what we're saying is that 210,000 square feet of the 700,000 square feet would be depicted toward commercial business.
Okay.
Ralph?
Thank you.
Well, Pat, to, to, the gross floor area is based on the residential and commercial, it's all buildings, all structures.
Together, yep, got it. Thank you.
Okay. So, so the change will be made under definitions, correct?
Yes, that's what I would.
Show of hands for that, I guess?
I would.
Okay, show of hands to put it in commercial definitions.
Great. That's there, that's there. Okay. I don't have a specific area for this, but do we want to add? I don't have a specific area for this, but do we want to add into the document? And again, we would have to find the location where to put it. A limit or a reduction, either by percentage or the number of three-bedroom units?
That would be in 5.3-B-12, if you wanted to do it.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
5.3-B-12-G.
I think that's page seven again.
It's page seven.
Down the bottom, yep.
So, under G, it currently states, "Residential condominiums and townhouses shall not exceed three bedrooms. Residential apartments shall consist of a mix of one- and two-bedroom units." So, the question comes in is, do we want to limit the number of three-bedroom units that can be built, either by percentage or a number? Go ahead, Pat, you're the only one with your hand up.
I'm sorry, Pat. Every time I, if I go to read the document, I do need to look at this.
That's covered, Mike.
So, wake me up, okay?
One eye pointed down, the other eye pointed up.
Go ahead, thank you.
I was the proponent of this article. Hearing some of the councilor's objections and recommendations, I would withdraw my suggestion.
Okay.
Hey.
So, no action, I guess, correct?
Yep, no action on that one. Okay, the next, I think it's the last question, I, just let me scan real quick, must change that's been done. So, I think the last thing we need to talk about is the ratio of commercial space, which would be page two, section 5.3-B-4. So, currently, under section B, it says, "The total gross floor area devoted to commercial and business use or uses shall not be less than 15% nor exceed 30% of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use village development." Of course, it goes on to say, "Any phasing of the development shall include the required minimum ratio of non-residential to residential uses." This was something that the subcommittee worked hard on, and I will be truthful, I don't think there was a huge amount of agreement to begin with. We went back and forth, should we have more commercial, should we have less? We had a developer that was at the meeting that wanted, actually, it may have been the original planning board document that started at 5%. And at least for myself, and I'm going to speak for me, I thought 5% was way too small and that we needed to bump that up. My concern is if we, I feel as though we need a range to give them. And if we go too high, I have a lot of concern about the amount of traffic because commercial literally drives a lot more traffic than what residential living has. One of the reasons we changed from a mixed-use district to a mixed-use village district was based on the fact that what we're looking at is something that's a lot more residential with some amenities that are commercial. I wanted enough amenities to help the entire town and to draw people from different areas into it, but I personally didn't want too many because I didn't want it to be like in, I think it's Hartford Blueback Square, which is like 90% commercial. This was something we struggled with, and I can tell by the number of questions that popped up, multiple councilors have the same thoughts. So, Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, before I start, I, earlier in the conversation, I talked about maybe having two or three items and that are going to require discussion, and I'm going to ask you if our pleasure would be to create a motion to enter into the subject matter of discussion on subject matters such as this, because it's going to definitely create some dialogue. So, I would ask, do we want to continue discussing this or do we want to make it a, put a motion out on a floor to discuss?
So, we could put a motion on the floor because it can always be amended after. So, I would move that with regards to the percentage of commercial, the percentage of total gross area for the commercial be left alone at a minimum of 15% and not to exceed 30% as written.
Okay, Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I agree with the councillor Ralph that you do need a range. I'm not sure that that range, I think that range may be too broad because many developers will say automatically, okay, it's going to be 15% because their money's in the residential.
Right.
Okay, so I would like to suggest an amendment to that motion to change the percentage from 25 to 33. The range from 25 to 33, which is a smaller range, still gives them flexibility within it, but it doesn't let them go down to 15%.
So, currently, Mike, there's actually no motion on the floor because it was never seconded.
Correct.
We can't amend something that doesn't exist at the moment.
For discussion purposes, so do we have, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. The percentage, I've spent a lot of time and received numerous phone calls from many residents, and I'm going to air back to the side that I'm one of seven. And when we switched our form of government over to the charter, that I feel it's imperative, at least from my position, to represent the residents' wishes. And the biggest problem that I'm hearing about this whole project is it doesn't seem to appear to be much of a mixed-use development. Short of that, without going on and on at this point in time, I believe there needs to be a range as well, and I'm going to just briefly touch on that. So, if, even if we said we changed the floor from 15 to 30, if you had customers come in or tenants come in that took up approximately 20%, and then your last vendor actually needed more that was going to push it over the top of 30, then you actually could lose a tenant because you wouldn't be able to offer the space that they wanted. You'd have to start moving walls around and possibly change their business model. So, I'm in favor of a range, and the range that I would be in favor of at this time, taking Ralph's thoughts into consideration, is to have a cap and not have the cap too high, because if you did all of a sudden have people, let's just say there was 50%, we, you know, there were enough businesses out there to occupy 50%, then traffic could influence, you know, the roadways coming in and out of the area. So, in short, so that I don't monopolize this conversation, I'd like to hear other people's inputs. My position and to represent the many phone calls and interest that was expressed would be to have a range of 30% to 35. So, 30 would be the low and 35 would be the high. Any other discussion? Marilyn?
I don't know where to begin. The, when, as a committee, we discussed this at length, actually, as Ralph said, we did not come to an agreement to want it 30%, to ended up with 15, and one wanted 10, and so there was this blend of 15 to 30. And then, one of the, one of the committee members said, "Let the councilors decide." So, here we are. I've always felt that a use such as this required somewhat of a balance between the uses if we have, we don't, we haven't asked for nor do we need a huge residential project. Likewise, we don't want a Blueback Square, which is 450,000 square feet of retail with only 44 luxury apartments. I mean, it's balanced in the other direction. What we, what we, I think, could appreciate is something that's a balance so that, yes, we're concerned about traffic. That's why we have an impact study incorporated within the bylaw. We have a host community agreement to look at certain, certain things that may occur depending on what's proposed. If we have a higher residential development, that's a greater risk at tapping into our town resources, whether it be schools, police, fire, ambulance. You know, I'm looking for a balance, a blend. 30 to 35, that's a little bit higher than I think I would want to go. I like Pat's 25 to 30, not 33. I mean, the numbers are out there, but I just, I just think that we need something that's more in tune. If we had 25% commercial, 75% residential, to me, that's at least a decent blend or balance of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Kathy?
Muted, Kathy.
I'm going to leave that alone, the noise, whatever. I would echo what Marilyn has said. The folks that I've spoken with are looking for reasonable residential living with amenities. Nobody that I've had discussions with is interested in a large housing project. And I think that ranges of, you know, 5% or 15 is, does not reflect the definition of what mixed is. And so, for all of those reasons, I'm compelled to listen to the folks that I've asked opinions of and be on the higher side in the 25 to the 30, to the 33%, as Pat has suggested.
Yeah. I'm making notes here, so Kathy, you, your feeling right now is 25 to 33?
I don't oppose a range. I think that's healthy, and I, and some of that will be flushed out in the site plan review and in the design review. But I could not support a range as low as 15% because to me, it does not exhibit the definition of mixed. It's, that wouldn't be mixed to me. That's heavily a housing project, a housing development.
Okay. Tom?
I agree with Kathy and most of what Marilyn said. I think what we're creating is a mixed-use village district. And to have such a high density of apartments, condos, and townhouses as opposed to commercial that doesn't represent what a mixed-use village district would be. And we're, as Kathy stated, we're leaning more towards an apartment complex as, with a few stores as opposed to a mixed-use district. So, I would be in favor of a higher number as well. And the numbers that we're throwing out, I think, we should probably be in a range of 25 to 35, and somewhere's in that range. And I don't know what the number is, the magic number, but at least 25%, up to 35%. Give them a range.
Okay, 25 to 35. I am, as I said earlier, I am writing all this down and hope, I'm pretty confident that we'll find some common ground here. Don, I saw your hand up?
I think what helps me is trying to visualize, again, I know we're not, and I've said this from day one, we're not approving a particular project, but we can't be naive and realize that the impetus behind this is the package machinery site. And my feeling is, is 20 to 30 with the opportunity of a specific waiver to go north of 30 if necessary. The 20% to 25%, as I understand, and I'm, this was information given to me, but it may not be, you know, we can independently verify it. So, let's say 22% would be the equivalent of taking every business from our Center Square Plaza and adding every business from the Long Meadow Shops, put them all together, put them on that package machinery site, and that would come into around the 22-ish percent. Again, we, these are just figures I'm taking as gospel. I have not independently verified that. But let's say that's true. If those numbers hold, I was at Long Meadow Shops for real estate closing today, and this is a Tuesday, and I was there around 9:10 in the morning, and there was a lot of cars parked there. And we also can tell, just by looking out the window at Town Hall, how many cars park at Center Square? Now, these are coming in off like William Street for Long Meadow, and they also got Maple Street as well as North Main Street. We just have Chestnut Street. And that's at the 22-ish percent range. To go to 35% would be, say hypothetically, add another Long Meadow Shops to that place. That's a crazy parking situation, especially if the place is very successful during the holidays. It's going to draw queues of traffic all the way back to, you know, running to Chestnut because you're going to attract the people from Connecticut as well as other, our own community and other communities. So, I'm kind of comfortable with that 20 to 30 range, but that's just, I'm throwing it out there to tell you what my take is.
Yeah.
Okay, Marilyn?
I'm listening to Don, and I appreciate the visual, but I do want to remind you that, that not all of this non-residential use will be retail. I'm sure we will see second-story, perhaps, commercial lawyer's office, real estate office, perhaps a dentist. I don't know, you know, conceivably what's out there. But the, and depending on how it's played out in the, in a project such as this, if you look at our table of uses, we have an indoor storage facility that we've added so that there might be a use within this type of component that would assist our residents who move there who have some antique furniture that they have no room for, but they're not ready to get rid of it, so that's where they store it. So, that's, that's a use that'll take up space, but it's not going to create a lot of traffic and, but it adds to the formula. So, there's a blend of a lot of things that are going to be worked into this component, and it's not just retail. My thoughts.
Thanks, Marilyn. Looking, Ralph?
Well, Mike, I'm a numbers guy. And the total gross floor area is what threw me here. So, we're talking a 40-acre parcel, 43,560 feet, 1,742,000 square feet is the entire parcel. You're only allowed 40% coverage for buildings. So, that brings you to the 696,960. So, that's a lot of coverage. We're able to go up in this district to 50 feet in height. So, let's just say with the 696,000 that we do 30% and we go two floors on everything. We don't go three or whatever, we just go two. You're at 418,000 square feet of commercial use. I mean, Don, you're mentioning Center Square and Long Meadow Shops, that's half of that. I think what most people aren't thinking about is that we're talking gross floor area, which you take the ground floor and then you multiply it going up. I mean, 30%, you're talking an awful lot. At 15%, two stories high, you're still looking at almost 210,000 square feet of commercial space. That is a lot of commercial space, and this doesn't affect the number of residential units. The number of residential units is set. They can have 12 per acre. They can have twelve per acre. Forty acres is a gross maximum of four hundred and eighty residential units. Whether you do thirty percent commercial or fifteen percent commercial, they can still have four hundred and eighty units. So it doesn't change the residential component. All it changes is your percentage of commercial. I, I just think, and I would hope, I would hope we end up with a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial, knowing that one use can be twenty-five thousand square feet. Two can be up to fifteen thousand, which, as I looked at last night, I guess a Trader Joe's now is a typical about twelve thousand square feet. The new type of all these is about that. So, so you may get an indoor storage facility. You may get a grocery store, but you're still looking at another hundred and something thousand square feet of businesses and retail and stuff. We're, we're talking a lot of commercial space that they have to fill. And how is this going to affect the existing businesses in town?
Marilyn?
Okay, through the chair, Ralph. You, you know, I have these numbers, which we've discussed before, and I got to the six ninety-six, nine sixty square feet after you, you know, reached the forty percent lot coverage. And my numbers say that if we did twenty percent, that the numbers would be one thirty-nine, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-two square feet. For fifteen percent, it's a hundred and four thousand five forty-four. And for thirty percent, it's roughly two hundred and ten thousand square feet. Now, the numbers that you're giving us today are huge and they're different based on a fifteen percent percentage, fifteen percentage. You get it? Anyway, my point is, what are we doing wrong here in terms of the language? We're asking for gross floor area. And now you're saying that we, the gross floor area is all of the, the floors of the different stories, which we have, we created the definition for. So if that's what we're going to get, then we need to change the language to something different so that we get a more reliable number in terms of how much square footage we're going to get. I don't know what the answer is. I told you I'm not a numbers person, but I know enough that the numbers you gave me in committee are different than the numbers you're giving us tonight.
The conversations I had with developers, we worked the numbers together. And when I threw out the seven hundred number earlier, that was rounded off from the number that Ralph put on the table. And we're all in agreement on that. That's based off the, the forty acres. So six ninety-six technically is the number. If we, if we went to twenty-five percent, that would be a hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet of commercial space. If we were at twenty percent, it would be one thirty-nine. In short, as we went around the room here, and I'm going to talk about the low, we had a high of thirty and we had a low of twenty and three in the middle at twenty-five percent. So I, I would be willing to start the conversation at a floor of twenty-five percent, which is the majority of this council right now, and work on the, the top end of it. The top end of it is, has been a high of, I've heard thirty-five, thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five and thirty. So you've got two at thirty, which is the low.
So Mike? Yes, but as far as the numbers go, that's six hundred and ninety-six thousand or seven hundred thousand as you rounded it. That's lot coverage for the buildings.
Right.
That's not gross floor area. So the calculation, which is five point three B dash four, is the total gross floor area devoted to commercial and business use shall not be less than fifteen percent nor exceed thirty percent of the total gross floor area of the mixed-use village. We just did up the definition for gross floor area. So each time you add a story to it, your number doubles. So if you go three floors, it's what you talked about times three. So either we need to change the language in here to discuss, or we have to say, put a minimum in. I mean, I, I guess my thought is how much square footage are we talking for commercial? What do, what do, what's the council's take on this? If you did your calculation with twenty-nine, twenty-five percent, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
No.
You came up with?
It would be, if we use the floor at twenty-five percent, which was the consensus of the majority of the council as a floor, then we, we need the language to represent it. And that equates to a hundred and seventy-four thousand of commercial square feet. Marilyn, would you agree with that?
Based on my notes.
Anyone else? But the language needs to be changed. If, if, if we're worried about, it would be three times that. That's, that's not what we're looking, that's not what our residents are looking for. I mean, I keep going back to what do the residents want? What are the people that have lived in this community forever and ever? They're, they're bringing their wishes forward here. They want a mixed-use development. And obviously, this fifteen percent isn't satisfying what, what they envision of, you know, an apartment complex with however many units it is. And if, if you're saying the residential units, that number's not going to change. Well, they want these other amenities if they're going to go over there, such as maybe a Trader Joe's, a diversity in restaurants and hair salons or whatever it might be. So simply put, we have, you know, twenty-five percent as a floor going around the room here. And, and, and I would say then, correct the language so that it, it shows. That's a hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet. Marilyn?
So are you suggesting that for a minimum of a forty-acre parcel of a mixed-use village district, instead of putting in a percentage, that we just lock in a certain square footage for a commercial use? Say, you know, the range, a hundred and fifty, just, I'm using numbers, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet to two hundred thousand square feet, which would be fifteen to thirty? I'm not sure. But the point is, lock something in that way that would protect us. What Ralph is talking about, I, I envision the building inspector going in and looking at these plans and saying, you know, you can measure this floor and this floor and this floor, and this is going to yield, you know, as Ralph said, four hundred thousand square feet of, of commercial. And that's not what we're asking.
That's not what we're asking.
No. So, so somewhere along the line, we have to fix this before we approve it.
Yeah, and I, I agree.
Tom, go ahead.
No, I'd say, I, I agree, I mean, with Marilyn and Ralph. I think before we can even further discuss this, we need to fix the language because I, I don't want to certainly see four hundred thousand square feet of commercial, but I certainly want to see a higher percentage.
Neither do I. It's not our intent. I mean, I'm, I'm working on the numbers that we put on the floor, but it has to equate to a number that we agree on, not three times that by, by going up.
Right.
All right.
So Mike, if I may, through the chair. So if I'm hearing correctly, what, what vast majority of the council wants is maybe a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of commercial on a forty-acre development?
One, one seventy-four. As a, one, here we go, one seventy-four as a floor, okay? The, the number that we, we would have to decide on, if we're all agreeing we want a range, and I understand what the range is about, and I, I think everyone does, that I wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to lose a tenant because you're, we're short a couple thousand square feet locked in at one seventy-four. So what, what, the ranges I heard were thirty-five, thirty, thirty-three, a second on thirty-five and one at thirty. So let's.
And I actually didn't speak, my, my motion was for fifteen to thirty. But we could actually add language into this paragraph that said, in no case shall there be less than X amount of square foot of commercial and business space. And so that way there, we put in that, no matter what you build, you're going to give us at least a hundred and seventy thousand square feet of business. And then depending on how big you build this, it may go up from there, but we have to have at least that amount.
Okay, so really what we're, in essence, I think what we're saying here is if we err on the low side of the cap, which is thirty percent, we're looking at one seventy-four to two-ten based on the numbers. Does everyone understand where that's coming from?
No.
The one seventy-four is twenty-five percent of the seven, or of six ninety-six. And I didn't punch it out exactly. Six ninety-six times thirty percent, if you use that for the cap, and I'm certainly not trying to influence anyone either way. I'm just using the low, low number right now, would, would be roughly two oh nine. So we're looking at a range of one seventy-four to two oh nine. If we were to, if we were to do, if we amended the bylaw, the proposed bylaw to read a minimum of twenty-five percent, not to exceed a maximum of thirty percent. Okay. Kathy, I'm sorry.
I'll go out on, I'll stick my neck out here and say that what we're talking about right now is, to me, the crux of this whole bylaw, you know, what does mixed actually look like? And all of the comments thus far have been very valid. But we're all over the board here and we have to agree on the real specific language that Ralph's proposed for the total gross floor area definition. And then really have some accurate math done here so we can see the various options. And so I would suggest continuing this again. And I know that's not, that's probably not a popular decision, but I, I'm feeling a little bit rushed to, on my legal pad here, writing all of this down and really trying to absorb it. I feel as though we should continue and even move this to a special meeting where this is the only thing on the agenda so that we can get it right and then approve a bylaw for this and then bring it, you know, give it back to the planning board so that should an applicant come forward, they're ready.
Don?
I agree. And I'm going to add one more thing. And I'm sure we still have this. We were entitled every year to a certain amount of technical assistance from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And I think if we have a specific question to them through the planning board, asking what our concern is as far as percentage, how it's calculated, and they can look at other planning strategies throughout the, the, you know, their area as well as Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think that we could get it done the right way. And I would think if we could take advantage of some of our local technical assistance, this would be an opportune time to do that.
Okay.
Mike, can I make one more suggestion?
Sure.
We have a zoning enforcement officer that would have to enforce these percentages and all. So if we're going to ask for math to be done, he's going to be the one doing it. So based on what we have written, could we get numbers from him? And that way there, it's not my interpretation, not yours, not, and, and see what he comes up with based on the language that we have. And then we can at least work from there. I mean, no matter what happens, he's the one that's going to be going out there and saying where he came up with the numbers and all. And I, I would think, and I would also absolutely agree that we should continue this.
Okay. Don?
Yeah, and I, I agree with Ralph. And the more eyes on this better, especially the people are going to be in the trenches enforcing it. But I still really feel it's worth talking to the experts on this type of matter, and that would be the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I think that would be, we, I think we'd be remiss at least not, at least throwing it out there for them for some local technical assistance.
Okay. I, I think because we are in, having a public hearing here, that the correct thing to do with the, to at least entertain public comments at this point, that they've waited patiently and we're, we're trying to work through this and this is nothing that we all know can be resolved in five minutes. So I would like to, at this point, come out of council comments and go back into public comments. Ask Don Mackey, but right after I take Pat Henry's comment, but that would be the suggestion. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I just want to suggest that you might want to instruct the public that they should comment on the items that are still on the table. Because we started this with council discussion. The council has eliminated many of these items. So to discuss, to have the public comment on those articles we've already voted not to change would not be appropriate. So some limitation to the items that we changed today or, or considering today.
Exactly. And that was the intent, to be able to, you know, condense the list like, like we did under, under council comments. So I would ask, well, for one, I'm going to, Ralph, you have another question?
Actually, we have a motion on the floor that was seconded. I'd like to remove my motion if Marilyn would dissolve her second because I, I don't believe it's pertinent anymore. We're not going to vote on that.
That's fine. I rescind my second.
And I rescind my motion.
Thank you both. So I'm looking at right now that we have thirteen attendees in the audience. And I would ask that if, if anyone would like to comment under public comments, could you signify by raising your hand and we will convert you over to a panelist at this point? Don, I'm going to ask if you, Don Mackey, I'm going to ask if you're seeing what I'm seeing here. And I, I'm not seeing any hands at this point in time.
I see what you see. Oh, there's one.
There they go.
There's a couple. We have Mr. Denver.
So I, I would like to state before we let our first attendee in, identified as Dawn, that could we please try to keep our comments to approximately two minutes? And if you need another turn, then after everyone speaks, then we'll allow you to have another two minutes to, to address your concerns. And also, we, we will need your name and address upon entering and being converted to a panelist. So if you'd like to bring Dawn, and she's on the top of the list right now.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Let's see if we can bring me in. Doesn't really matter. I just have a couple of comments. There we go. Regarding, I like the idea when we're talking about the ratio of commercial space. I like the idea of having a floor and a ceiling. My concern is we're talking about some huge numbers here. And I want you to pull the, the camera back a little. And while you're thinking about your floor and ceiling, think about the impact it will have on the Shaker Road corridor and North Main Street with existing businesses. How will this affect these businesses? My concern is, well, we have a lot of movement and empty buildings. I know we can't forecast what's happening in the future, but we've seen tremendous impacts of COVID, which is permanently or will permanently change the way business is done. We've seen it in Town Hall. We've seen it in businesses. Many large companies across the country are now having their office workers work from home. To a large extent, this is going to happen and it's going to be permanent. So the idea of large offices going in may or may not happen. These are things we need to think about. Our other, my other concern is there is an assault on the brick and mortar, small businesses, even medium-sized businesses. Again, exacerbated, exacerbated a bit by COVID. You're in the store and you're talking to people and they're saying, oh, I'm here to get this. But Amazon is living at my house. Amazon and Walmart, they are a fact of life and they're the way, the future of business. So brick and mortar is not going to be around. So brick and mortar is not going to be around. We will be a little bit, but it's going to change. My concern is how many of these small businesses will go into this development? Even the chains at the square footage that we have? I also wanna remind you that many years ago, this town fought tooth and nail to keep large, big boxes out. I like the idea of the smaller sizes. But the practical realities of the future of business is something you guys kinda have to put your forecaster's hat on, and in a way, you're doing economic development. So all I'm asking is to really keep that in mind and think about the town as a whole as well. And you've got a tough job, and I wish you well.
Don, could we, could we have your address for the record, please?
Oh, sure, Dawn Starks, twenty-eight Elm Street.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you, bye now.
Bye. And Don, could you bring Mr. Denver in as well?
Hello?
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 We can hear you, but we can't see you.
All right, hold on. How's that?
Both sides.
Just, just two quick things, if I could, so.
Could we please have your address for the record?
Sure, Russell Denver, Two Lester Street, East Long Meadow. I'm also chair of the planning board. Just kinda give you, just real quick, a little historical perspective when this all started with the planning board, because one thing that came up with your group tonight was the death of what is a mixed use? And I will tell you, the planning board spent many hours on that. And to us, the mixed use was more a mixture of housing types rather than housing slash commercial. So I would just ask that you kinda keep that in mind because there was apartments, condos, townhouses, and single families, which certainly is a mixed use of housing. I could not have said what Dawn said any better. If you take a quick look around town, there are many office buildings in town that are a quarter filled, whole floors that are empty, that, where there used to be a dental office or accounting office or a legal office. And if you're going to add a hundred and seventy thousand square feet to that mix along with the retail, you may find even more of those office buildings vacant. In fact, one of those buildings was almost bought by the town as a new town hall, probably five or six or seven years ago. And don't think that that has filled up any time since then. So I would ask that when you're coming up with the magic number on commercial, that you also just think of the business properties that are currently in town that are not filled, and if, what happens if you add an additional a hundred and seventy thousand square feet to the overall inventory for commercial in town? That's all I've got to say. The work you did tonight has been spectacular, I think you've made great progress, and so I congratulate you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, Don, get me out of the meeting.
Yeah, so I can't get, so, so, Russell, when you go, you're gonna be gone for good. I don't have the same option as I have on my Mac here, so.
It's okay, it's past my bedtime, I'll leave.
I, thank you.
Okay, I, Don, I'm not seeing any other hands at this point in time?
Nope.
So it's fair to say that we'll, we'll close the public portion of this public hearing. And I believe we're looking for a motion to continue the public hearing. And we'll obviously need a date and a time to tie that together. So let me just clean something off my screen here. And somebody wanna take a shot at this motion?
What's our, through the chair, what's our coming up meetings?
I believe we're looking at twelve fifteen.
Are we gonna do a dedicated this alone, or maybe if we have all the research done, maybe can we bury this into the twelve fifteen meeting?
I would ask Jeannie to take a look at that workload right now.
It's, it's December eighth. December eighth is the next meeting.
Okay.
Let me, let me. Okay, correct, it would be the second, second Tuesday in December. So what's the workload looking like on the eighth?
It's not too bad, you have to review and approve all the licenses for 2021, which usually doesn't take a lot of time. Off the top of my head, I can't think of any other weighty issues coming up that would be timely.
So, so, did you say that, that won't take a lot of time, correct? So Kathy, before, before I bring you in, I would suggest that the time is important with this. So I wouldn't wanna put it off to 2021, that's just my feeling, and this will be the last meeting of 2020. So my suggestion would be to keep the agenda light so that we can focus on this topic and this topic pretty much only, besides licensing issues. And that will be the core of the next council meeting. And it gives us, you know, from today to the eighth, to refine all the issues that we talked about tonight regarding the math and, you know, public concern. Marilyn?
Also, we need to figure out, either talk to Mary or the planning board to find out how we can access the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission as soon as possible, because I don't know what their schedule is in terms of language, you know, working on language to do what we wanna do and based on whatever percentage we decide on.
Okay. Any other comments at this point? So would somebody wanna take a shot at the motion to continue, continue this too? I would, again, I'm gonna ask Jeannie on the timing, I mean, we have the date in mind, our meeting will start at six PM, but do we, we wanna probably approve those licenses prior to this?
Except, you've got no public hearings, so I would say if you wanted to, like I said, the licenses won't take long, possibly town manager performance evaluation on that date. So there's not too many things.
That's all.
I would say approve the licenses first, get that out of the way.
Okay, so my suggestion might be six thirty, but Don?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing until December eighth at six fifteen PM.
Second.
A motion's been made, and second, is there any further discussion? Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote. Mike Kane, I'm a yes, Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
And Pat Henry?
Yes.
The motion passes to continue this public hearing. And if I can find my agenda here. We now are moving to orders of the day's under nine A licensing matters. Approval of change of manager for D'Nardo's Pizzeria and Restaurant. I don't know if you've all had a chance to review the information, I believe, Jeannie, all the paperwork is in order?
It is.
So I'm looking, entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mike, given that the, everything is in order, I move to approve the change of manager of D'Nardo's Pizzeria and Restaurant to Marco D'Naro.
I'm sorry, Jeannie?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you to notice that the attorney for the applicant is in the audience as well as the new manager, unless you wanted to ask them any questions. I know you like to have them present when these come up, so.
Does anyone have any questions for the attorney? Right now, we do have a motion on the floor and a second to approve. Is there any questions for the attorney? Hearing and seeing none. If there's no further discussion, this is a roll call vote as well. Mike Kane, if I start off, is a yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
And Ralph Page?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations and good luck with the name change and the new manager. Under licensing matters, again, an update from Town Council Bylaw Committee, I defer to Pat Henry.
Thank you, Mike. I think a licensing committee is Kathy, though.
I, I, did I say licensing committee or bylaw committee?
Bylaw.
Bylaw, Pat?
All right, yes. For the sake of any townspeople who are watching, this is a multi-year project we're talking about to update all of our towns as form structure with only very modest actual changes in the bylaws themselves. The project is owned by the town manager and the town clerk, but the bylaw review subcommittee of the town council is assisting in overseeing the project. The town has hired an outside vendor to assist us in what we're calling a cleanup and recodification project. When complete, the entire code will be available online in an easy-to-follow, fully searchable format that is shared by at least a hundred other towns in the Commonwealth. Serving on the committee are myself, town councillor Ralph Page, school committee member Bill Fonseca, assistant DBW superintendent Tom Christensen, and town clerk Jean Quaglatti. Currently, we're on the last phase of the project, working with the vendor. The vendor has sent us a final draft, which we are reviewing. Our committee is reviewing for completeness and correctness only. No new changes are contemplated. This step was supposed to be completed this month, but in view of the elections and COVID-19, we have been given an outside date of January thirtieth to complete this step. Our aim is to complete it before that, but it is very tedious work. The next steps will be legal review, formal council approval, February, March, in either a public hearing or a vote next June to approve the new code. We're not sure what the future step would be, but we would be dealing with the lawyers on that. And that's my report, to let you know where we're up to. Any questions from the council?
Hearing and seeing none, Pat, thanks for the report. All good information. And while we're on licensing matters here, Kathy, could you give us an update regarding partially used licenses?
Yes, our committee has met a couple of times in the past, well, since summer. And most recently, we reconvened to take up the matter that came before the council back in probably summer-ish, around the issue of, we had a concern that three establishments in town who hold all alcohol licenses were not in effect really using them for a variety of different reasons. And the council, at the recommendation of the licensing committee, voted to treat each matter individually and inform them through a letter, each establishment through a letter, that they would be required to come to an administrative hearing before the council. And that if the council was not happy with the, their explanation, that we could, after a hundred and eighty days of their not showing us use otherwise, that we could in turn take back the license. The purpose of our most recent meeting was based on that clause, a hundred and eighty days, which originally we, it had been said to us from a representative at the ABCC that that was the window that they would recommend. In fact, at a subsequent conversation, there is no recommended window and that each local licensing authority, the council in, in our case, in East Long Meadow, can set any timeframe that they so desire to have the licensee explain their circumstances or begin actual full use of an alcohol license. So right now, the recommendation of the committee or is to inform the council that we don't need to abide by any one hundred and eighty day clause. On a similar matter, two of the three licensees have explained the reason why they have not used it, and they are, those reasons are acceptable to the committee. And the third one is, I assume, in the process of moving forward to open the establishment and actually put it into full use, so. That's pretty much it for at this point. And as you know, and as Jeannie said, each year, every licensee for alcohol, all alcohol or malt and beverage must renew their application, and the council will be approving that in December. They go year to year, January to January.
Thanks, Kathy. Anyone have any questions for Kathy?
Mike, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So come the time for renewal, if a license hasn't been used, let's say, within the last year, we don't have to renew that license, is that correct?
That's correct, that, that would be at the prerogative of the LLA based on, at that, it would behoove us to have that administrative hearing with the, the licensee to say, okay, you haven't used it in a year, so what are you thinking? And then we could retake back the license. But you're right, this is the window where we can get it correct once a year.
And the reason for my question is, in my mind, I'm thinking of one that occurred last January or so, when, when we were encouraged to let them keep the license for a short term because they were in the process of a sale, and now we're at the end of the year and it still hasn't occurred. And it's frustrating that we could have other businesses operating in town using that license. Just my thought, that's all, thank you.
You're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Kath. The, I'm sure you're all aware of the Citizen Initiative petition, which is for a countryside store being brought forward by Ironman Sherry Incorporated.
Mike, before you go any further, this is regard countryside store. I actually do snow plowing and work for them, so I will need to recuse myself at this time from any discussion.
Okay, Ralph, thanks. As we all know, countryside stores located at three thirty-four Summers Road, and they are petitioning for an additional alcohol off-premise liquor license. Myself and Jeannie have been kinda working through the process because this is another way of trying to obtain a liquor license when we, right, right now, at this point in time, do not have one available. But Jeannie, would you like to comment further on where we are with this?
Sure, so this started in July, I got a letter from an attorney representing the applicant, or the petitioner, I should say. So East Long Meadow has a quota of thirty liquor licenses from the ABCC, the Alcohol Beverage Commission, based on population. So this petition is asking for the town to be awarded an additional license. So they started with a petition with fifty signatures in July. However, the petition verbiage was incorrect, they referred to Board of Selectmen and a few other things, so they had to resubmit it. So they resubmitted the petition and I certified fifty signatures voters. The first ten signers are to be the petitioner's committee. So I, according to the charter, sent the petitioner's committee a copy of the petition that was deemed in proper order by the town attorney. And then the petitioner had to get fifty more signatures of voters that didn't sign any of the, any of the previous petitions. They submitted that and then. They submitted that and then they had 39 signatures. So, they resubmitted another form and they had 37. So, now they have the 50 signatures required to go to the next step. So, the next step we're at now is the council has to act within 30 days of the receipt of the last batch of signatures. So, November 6th is when I received that. 30 days is December 6th. Our next meeting is December 8th. So, the purpose of this is to inform you of what's going on and have the council make a motion to continue the matter upon further review. I didn't, I just certified the signatures, but now I have to notify the 10 petitioner's committee members of the form, and I haven't had a chance to do that. So, once I do that and we progress to the next meeting, we can act accordingly. It's a lot of steps and I've been working with Jesse on this, the town attorney, just to make sure that we're in compliance with the charter.
Okay. Any questions for Jeannie at all? If not, entertain a motion to continue the matter of the Citizens Initiative Petition for Arman Cherie, Inc., of 334 Summers Road, to December 8, 2020, for further review.
So moved.
I made a motion and Don?
I'll second it.
And it's now been seconded. Is, is there any further discussion? Jeannie?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the council, as the local licensing authority, can either approve it or reject it. I believe it's approved, it goes to the state level and takes quite a lot of time and is ultimately approved by the governor for the additional license.
Right. And I would just like to add, I mean, generally, not generally, but they are, but these licenses that the towns have obviously are based off population and the population is at a point where all our licenses that we have are currently out there right now and this is a way to try to get an additional license. Kathy?
On that same note, our quota is based on population. Is it conceivable, and my question would be to Jeannie, is it conceivable that when the 2020 census numbers are known that our population would increase, which may result in our getting an additional license more by default than having us go through the process, what you said is going to be complicated and lengthy, to petition the governor to add one in?
Yeah, I would say no. I looked at the past, the 1990, 2000, the population hasn't moved much. It's 16,000, it goes up, it goes down, but by very little. So, I don't see it changing by that much of a degree that we would get another liquor license.
All right, thank you.
They already have a beer and wine on premise. They want all alcohol on premise. Off premise, I'm sorry.
Don?
I just want to make a side comment. So, as we're, this is actually on point to what we discussed earlier. If we approve the mixed use, if a petitioner or this petitioner comes in and needs to fill 177,000 square feet, you can bet that there's going to be a restaurant, perhaps a small package store, things like that in there. So, we, we may need to find a way to get more liquor licenses, if that's even possible, to make these projects doable.
It's not easy from talking to the executive director at the ABCC. It's a lengthy process and it's quite complicated, so.
Well, I would just add, I mean, if we brought in, if there were 480 units there and the population of the town goes up, then it's, it's based off population. So, it might be an easy way to obtain an additional license based off population. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. I seem to recall that we might have at least one of the firms holding the pocket license does not intend to renew. So, that license might be available on January 1st. Am I remembering correctly, Kathy?
Yes, that's correct. I'm through the chair, I'm sorry. That's correct. And if, if I can continue, Mike. It also then with, I hadn't thought about what Don just said, but the potential for the folks, the tenants of commercial and retail, retail, or commercial rather, to populate a mixed-use village would necessitate having more licenses available. And so, to me, that also behooves us as LLA to be, make sure that every one of our licensees is truly conforming to their obligations to hold it and use it.
Okay. We do have a motion, a motion on the floor at this point and it's been seconded. Is there any, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Would anybody want to make the motion regarding the citizens petition here?
I thought we made that motion.
You made the motion and I seconded it.
Okay, so we're, we're, we're ready for a roll call vote then.
Yep.
Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ralph?
So, he's.
Ralph accused himself.
Right.
Pat?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Next order, Business Under Financial Matters, is approval of expenditures for the Porter-Poor Fund interim council on aging director Danielle Travella. I believe she's still in the audience. Don Mackey, could you please bring her into the meeting? And, Don, are you there?
Yeah, she's coming.
Okay. I don't see her on the attendees list here, but maybe she's on the panelist.
I do, just boot her up.
Already there, great.
Sounds like AOL, back in the AOL days.
It was my X machine.
Your mouse.
Hi, Danielle, how you doing?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Again.
Okay, very good. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, I am asking that the council approve a request from the Porter-Poor Fund, which has been done several years back annually to serve and to support people in the community who are experiencing financial difficulties. It's usually in the past been utilized for back rent payment, back mortgage payments and for emergency fuel. So, typically, we've had several candidates that I myself, as a Director of Community Services, have had to scrutinize, for lack of a better word, their finances to see if this is a project or a fund that we can utilize for them. We also exhaust all other means, first, fuel assistance, food, SNAP, any other things that we can think of, other resources to help their financial situation. So, in the past, we have requested this. This year, I would like to request $4,000 to help them out financially, people in the community. It's open to all ages, not just seniors.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Danielle at all? I'll start on the top with Don.
Hi, Danielle. Hi. If the motion, if I make the motion for up to 4,000, is that sufficient? Or do we need specifically 4,000?
We, it's usually a set figure and we work with that as best that we can.
Okay.
Knowing that the pandemic is still here and present, we are expecting some additional financial difficulties within the community.
Okay. What I'd like to do, Don, could you make the motion? And we will get a second on it and then we'll continue the discussion.
Sure. I'll make, I move to approve expenditures of $4,000 from the Porter-Poor Fund.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. We can continue our discussion with Marilyn.
I have a question and a comment. The question is, what's the balance in the fund?
I do not have that information. That is a fund that I believe is held at the town hall.
Okay.
Jeannie, could you answer that?
Yes, I'm looking at the minutes of last year's meeting when Carolyn came to the council for the approval and the verbiage was up to 3,000 then. That's why I did the same this time, up to 4,000. And at the time, there was approximately 42,000 in the account before the approval of the up to 3,000. So, there's almost 40,000. Does that sound right, Danielle?
Yes.
Okay.
The comment I wanted to make as well, in the correspondence, it seemed there was some question whose authority it was to approve this expenditure. And I, you know, as a member of the Board of Selectmen years ago, it was always the selectman that approved Porter-Poor Fund transfers. So, I'm curious why, why the council is doing this as opposed to Mary. It's just a, you know, a question, that's all.
I believe last year it had been presented to the council. I think that was made known that it had to go through the council.
I'm not, I'm not objecting to that. I was just curious because it was the executive department that did the, the approval back years ago and now it's become legislative and I just was curious if Mary wants the job.
Through the chair, Mike. From what I recall, last year, there was a lot of confusion and it was in the town manager's lap at the time and after research, and I don't recall if it was through the town attorney's advice, it was deemed that the council was responsible for the approval of the expenditures.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm just curious.
Through the chair, I remember that conversation as well. When we approved the $3,000 at that time, it came to us as the appropriating body for monies for the town.
Kathy?
That's it in the nutshell. It's because we're responsible for appropriating monies from whatever, wherever the funds are. So, that's why it fell back to, to the council instead of to the manager.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none?
Actually, I.
Go ahead, Ralph.
I want to jump in. So, the motion is to approve $4,000, yet up to us, we've done up to. My concern is if we appropriate 4,000 and they only spend 3,950, then do we have to come back again to accept that little bit back? I would prefer to see us do a motion up to $4,000, knowing that they can spend up to $4,000, but if they only spend 3,800, because that's all that's needed, that's okay. So, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to change the language to read up to $4,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. I'll start the vote with Donnie Anderson.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
And Ralph Page?
Yes.
Thanks for the information, Danielle.
Thank you.
Now, now, now.
Pat?
Now, we have to vote on the, we voted on the amendment, now we need to vote on the motion.
The main motion as amended.
Yeah, yes.
Voting on the main motion as amended, I am a yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
And Ralph?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you, you're very patient tonight.
Have a good night. Good luck.
Continuing along under Financial Matters, B2 is the approval to amend the original, raise an appropriate amount as reflected in the motion, number 1A, dated July 21st, 2020, of $63,644,001 to $61,873,658.42. Steve, you've been sitting in the audience all night, very patient. Unmute yourself and speak.
People don't like hearing me speak. The motion, this is mainly did, we found this out during the tax recap while we're preparing to get the tax factor for tonight's meeting. And what happened is we erroneously kept, included things that were already explained later on. So, for example, the capital projects and the compensated absences are separate motions. I believe there are two and three, but we included with the overall raise and appropriate of the budget. What, that happens when stuff like that just goes through is as we do the recap, we have to include it as a raise and appropriate, which at that point increases tax factor and it's really counting it twice. And so, we, we want this amendment to take it off and only count it once, which allows us to bring the tax rate down to the 21.06 that Diana talked about earlier.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
All good news.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions before I ask for a motion? Pretty simple. Motion, please.
Mike, I like to move the town vote to amend the original raise and appropriate amount as reflected in the motion, 1A, dated July 21st, 2020, in the amount of $63,644,001.1
One dollar.
for the town purposes and charges in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1st, 2020, in accordance with the general laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and all acts in amended thereof, including in addition to thereto, Chapter 849 of the Acts of 1969, as amended for the operation of the town departments as contained in the town of East Long Meadows' operating budget as general fund uses, general fund operating budget fiscal year 2021.
Before we, before I ask for a second on that, Tom, could you amend the amount of $63,644,001 instead of 1 cent?
Yes. I'm sorry. Is that a dollar or a cent? Because on my form, it looks like a cent, but.
It's a dollar.
A dollar.
Dollar, okay. So, I amend that to $63,644,001.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we're roll call vote this again. Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
I am a yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. Currently, there is no, all business on the agenda. We have no new business under our summary action items. I believe an action item would be our due diligence to work and get the additional information and clarification we need to approach the bylaw, mixed-use zoning bylaw for our next meeting. Does anyone else have any action items based off tonight's meeting? Kathy?
Thanks, Mike. The council adopted its first set of rules once we came into formation as a new government. We created our first rules in November of 2016 and annually, since then, in November, we have conducted a review of council rules. Obviously, November is fast leading and we've yet to address that. And the December meeting is already loaded. And the December meeting is already loaded with important things. So, I would recommend that review of council rules be placed on our first January meeting.
I think that's great advice. I was going to mention the fact that, you know, one council meeting, it's been a very long meeting tonight, but hopefully, everyone will be able to enjoy a great Thanksgiving. It's approaching very quickly, and for planning purposes, for the month of December, with the holiday in December as well, we're looking at one meeting. So, that's one meeting left for 2020. So, your suggestion is well taken. I'd look for, at this point in time, a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Okay.
Going to second the motion.
All right, we have a second. If I can just quickly look here, showing 9:32. If there's no further discussion, I am a yes. Donnie Anderson?
Yes.
And Marilyn Richards?
Yes.
Kathy Hill?
Yes.
Tom O'Connor?
Yes.
Ralph Page?
Yes.
Pat Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 9:32. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Sweet dreams, everyone.
Great job.